Thank you.
Okay, now that we have the meeting recorded, we will make a, we've made a motion. I made a motion, it was seconded by Frank to open the meeting, roll call vote, Addie Mae Weiss with I. Rob Wolf.
Hi.
Frank Coke.
Hi.
Jim Guarino.
Hi.
And Steph Harrison, so we are.
At 7:02, thank you.
7:02 PM on the 25th of, sorry. Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. So the agenda for this evening that was posted is, we have minutes from February 11th. We have a hearing that's posted for an A and R at 109 Nathan Hill Road. At 7:15 PM, we have the continuation of the special permit renewal for Adessa. And current planning board business, we have the warrant preparation, PowerPoint preparation advisory to get ready for the March 12th meeting and March 22nd. Hearing, and then the there's a proposal, proposed 40B at 121 129 Washington Street for discussion and planning board comment. And then any other business, including the town planner report would follow. Are there any other items not anticipated within 48 hours to add to the agenda?
No, but Addie Mae, I would request to defer the minutes to the next meeting because I just haven't had a chance to, like, a minute to look at them, and I want to take a look at them. Is that okay?
I think that is, does anyone have any objections to that?
Nope.
I mean, I think that's fine, it doesn't change anything. Yes, so we will, do we need to do a roll call vote on that?
Do a motion, a roll call vote.
A motion to do the, move the review of minutes from February 11th to the next meeting, which is
The 18th.
The 18th of March. So that's my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, all in favor, Addie Mae Weiss is an I, Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Rob Wolf.
Aye.
And Frank Coke.
Sure.
Okay, thanks, sorry. Did I leave anyone off?
Yeah, I'm an I.
Sorry. Alright, so we will do minutes at the next meeting. So I guess we have 109A, we've got 10 minutes until we can address the Adessa hearing, so I believe the 109 Nathan Hill Road A and R is fairly straightforward, Heidi, do you want to introduce?
Certainly. So actually, last year, we did 109 in Nathan Hill Road, and if you look at the locust map in the upper right-hand corner, this is what it was, it was almost a trapezoidal parcel with a second parcel right here on the left-hand side. That's how they divided that into, now they're asking for that, a triangle lot that is going to then be able to be transferred to the second parcel. So where the A and R is for the one trapezoidal parcel to be divided into two, the smaller triangle and then the right-hand parcel. This triangle is a, not a buildable lot, so we're not looking at street signage or anything else. It's a pretty straightforward A and R. They filed the right paperwork, we have all the right filings, the milars, the others. It's mainly, does anyone have any questions on this?
What is the reason for this?
So the person that wants to buy the left-hand lot would like to have it be a straighter line. And a more linear lot. So initially, where the person was keeping that triangle space because they did not want to have that to be buildable, I think the agreement they've made is probably that they're going to be transferring that parcel, it'll make the persons lot more regular, but they will not have that area be a buildable if site. So just what we're coming forward with.
As mentioned, it's pretty clean, pretty straightforward, it's not a buildable lot, meets all the requirements. It's an A and R, which means approval not required, we're looking for an endorsement from the planning board. And I have a motion to endorse this A and R.
A second.
I moved, seconded, a roll call vote, Addie Mae Weiss is I, Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Rob Wolf.
Aye.
Frank Coke.
Aye.
And Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Great, so all in favor, and I'm making a second motion because this is pretty straightforward and they're they'd like to get this completed quickly, and I have, I'm making a motion to ask that the board support. I'm forgetting the right language, just to support my signing on behalf of the board. Authorized to
Just to endorse it on behalf of the board.
To endorse on behalf of the board.
Second.
Alright, moved and seconded, all in favor, Addie Mae Weiss, I, for Steph Harrison. For, Rob Wolf.
Aye.
Frank Coke.
Aye.
And Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Alright, thank you, everyone, so I will take care of signing this first thing tomorrow morning, okay, Heidi?
Great, thank you. Yeah, and actually, just a formality on the Adessa special permit. Once we get this finalized, everyone's signature is going to be required, and that's when we'd like to have everyone come in and sign in person so that we do get originals to file. So that'll be a little different. And then I'll work out a schedule with everyone, we can get that done. Do you want me to give a little bit of town planner report, Addie Mae, while we wait a few minutes?
Sure.
Okay. So we've had a little bit of some pushback and some feedback, I'm hearing from people on the MBTA 3A community compliance that we're trying to do. No surprise, I've had people mention the Middleborough decision, which is claiming if there's an unfunded mandate involved, now, middle borough scenario is also a little bit different because they have built over 500 housing units since 21, and it looks like they were trying to count some of it in their number, they have to have enough, it's well over 1,000 units that they have to produce, so it's a little bit different scenario from where we are. And one of the things I'm trying to stress to the people that call in is we are trying to make a responsible decision with our compliance. And once we see where things fall out, we can always revote zoning in the future, so it's something that the best interest would be trying to make something that's compliant with the town, so we don't lose the fundings and the grant opportunities. And if the town wants to revisit it, if they feel that the landscape has changed, that is always an option to come back for zoning. So outreach that I'm going to be planning, I had just gone this past week to the COA's coffee, and there was a nice little group there. Some good discussion on what's going on, they actually seem fairly supportive of our proposal. I will be attending the coffee on next Wednesday with Chris Kane with them, and to also bring up, they're going to publicize that out, that we're going to be there to talk about the zoning articles in general. I'm also going to be holding a town planner office hours on March 19th via Zoom. Again, to be available to talk about any of our warrant articles, just to give people an opportunity to call in, talk if they want to, and see if we can get some questions answered ahead of time.
And Steph, you don't need to keep the A and R plan up, if you want to drop that, then we can see everyone. Thanks.
Sure, and Paul Dorensis was mentioning to me that he was thinking that maybe we should do an ATM mini-session before the ATM in April, he said some of his towns do the dry run on some of the longer topics so that the public has a chance to hear it then and get some ideas read it out before the actual town meeting, so I think he was going to be bringing that up to Jeremy. And I'm going to ask all of you to help get the word out about our ATM and our compliance for the MBTA 3A, as well as the ADU, like, if everyone can have an outreach of reaching out to whoever they know. Just try and get people to ask questions and see if we can drum up support, to make sure we get a positive vote and put a lot of time in here, you know, almost two years of work, and it would be nice to get that to completion.
The time is important, but also where we stand as a town right now, we are still considered a small adjacent town because we are under 5,000 residents. But we are close to that tipping point, so waiting if we bump to the next category, we're in a position that larger populations such as Holliston with a much bigger requirement to zone for, so right now, we were fairly small last.
Was, it was interesting, I had asked Deb Seifring to run a report on all our federal grants and state grants for the last, since 2021. And the town with a whole combination of our grants earmarks, everything received $3.2 million in the five years. You know, 839 was just the roundabout, we've had over 200,000 just in the earmarks for the digitization of records of our records and files, as well as the Leland Woodhaven Well, that's a big chunk of money. And so that's what we would possibly forego, we don't know exactly what grants are going to be affected yet, that we know some of them are, but they may be adding more, they had said they were going to add more, the state said that, so we'll have to keep an eye on that, but that's something the town would lose out on, and Milton spent up to $300,000 on their lawsuit, so that's another big cost to the town. So we'll have to get that information out there as well. But it looks like we're getting close here to the 7:14, and Addie Mae is alright, if I introduce the Adessa members of attendance?
Yes, and we don't need to redo the full hearing, right, we did that on, when we opened it officially, February 11th, is that correct?
Right, but I would make a motion to have open the continuation. So, you're almost there?
Yeah. Watching the clock. Assuming everybody's still got 7:14.
I have 7:15.
We have 7:15. Sold. I think alright, 7:15 according to my phone, so I'm going to take that as the official time, 7:15 PM, so I am making a motion to open the continuation of the hearing first posted from February 11th, for the continuation of the special permit renewal for the, for Adessa.
Second.
Okay, it's moved, seconded, any further discussion? Okay, so I guess all in favor of opening the continue, or continuing, opening the continuation, Addie Mae Weiss is I, Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Bob Wolf.
Aye.
Frank Coke.
Aye.
And Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Okay. We got everybody, right? Alright. Okay, so the special permit renewal for Adessa, I will turn this over to you, Heidi, to introduce our guest.
Sure, so in present online here is Liz Morich, who is the current general manager of Adessa Boston. We also have Jack Neshi, who is the former general manager of Nessa Boston, and is still helping out. And then we have Matt Ekel, who is the attorney for Adessa, and it's, he's with Fletcher Tilton. And I'm going to actually turn it over to Matt, who will do a brief introduction and let us know what Adessa would like to do.
Thank you, Heidi, and Madam Chair, members of the board. As mentioned, my name is Matt Ekel, I'm an attorney with Fletcher Tilton here tonight on behalf of Adessa. To make a long story short, I suppose, I'll go through this brief presentation just to orient the board and anyone else on on the meeting with the site. But as I think everyone knows, this is a longstanding special permit, which is identified as off Western Ave. I believe the official address per the assessors might be 12 Western Ave, off the top of my head, but essentially, this is a split split lot between Sherborne and Framingham, you can see in this picture here on the cover screen. The majority of the structures and cars are located across, located across the district line into Framingham. However, where the, I can't tell if you can tell, there's solar panels, but where the kind of rectangles are towards the middle of the screen, the majority of that is in Sherborne, and there's been a longstanding special permit here for the storage of accessory vehicles, and part of that special permit requires that it is renewed every couple of years, and in this case, we're requesting a three-year renewal period. The special permit was conditioned on a number of factors, including some landscaping, having certain policies in place to try to keep the trucks off of Western Ave, anything over two cars has to be rerouted, we do have an official policy for that. And any violators of the policy receive warnings first, and a notice of violation, and then subsequent offenses could lead to suspensions, so I've worked with Heidi in some minor modifications to the decision, which I'm sure we'll go over following the conclusion of this presentation. Most of it is just terminology relating to the code and the type of relief we're looking for, as well as a few slightly outdated conditions, and again, we'll happily go over that, I think Heidi will lead that once we get to that appropriate time. But again, this is just the aerial view, looking down at both the Sherborne and Framingham portions of the Adessa site. We already introduced ourselves, but just to reintroduce, Liz Morich, the current general manager, is available if you have any questions, and she's on tonight. My name is Matt Ekel, and again, the official proposal is we're seeking to renew the existing special permit for accessory storage and parking of automobiles. The presentation, as mentioned, is very brief, it's really just a couple of images, just in case anyone's not familiar with the site. So what you're looking at here is from the GIS map, showing the site in the Sherborne portion. This is about 10 acres, approximately 6.35 are under the current special permit. The back section, which from your vantage point here is to the left, is not developed and has some wetlands towards the very rear of it, so it's only about 6.35 of the 10 acres, which is currently under this special permit. We have an aerial view here, somewhat similar to that opening slide, but a little bit different perspective. You can very faintly, and I'll use my cursor if you can see it, make out the dividing line between the city of Framingham and Sherborne right here. So about three and a half of these roof solar panel canopies are within Sherborne, and then the rest going up to the north is Framingham. The exits and entrances to the site are in Framingham, and nothing's changing there. You can see, as the line divides right here, you can see the entrance and then the exit further up to the north. And just an aerial view, looking kind of more straight on, again, with the dividing line being somewhere right around here. These are some very recent pictures, these are just included to show the vegetation, part of the special permit was to keep up with with landscaping, obviously, with us coming out of winter, it's a little more desolate than normal, but it does come back in full bloom, and we will certainly honor any need to have continued upkeep on that as required by the special permit. This is essentially the property line where there's the firefighting training facility to the left, so this is the far-left corner of that property line on Western Ave. This is looking back towards Framingham, I'll also point out, part of the decision was to maintain this barrier line, this barrier fence, excuse me, which we have done and will continue to do. And just to summarize again, very brief presentation, but we're seeking and requesting from this board a renewal of the existing special permit, again, the special permit goes back to 1996. Throughout the years, it has various durations on it, most recently was only two years, I believe, based on the COVID pandemic and kind of dates getting a little thrown off with the tolling period. However, through much of the 2010s, it was always renewed on a three-year period, so that's what we're requesting this evening. This does allow for the accessory storage parking of automobiles. We're not proposing any changes to our operations in, over the town line into Sherborne, everything will remain exactly the same. The truck drivers and the truck company policy remains in effect, which we will still provide to all new companies doing business with, and we will have available at all times onsite. If a driver, for whatever reason, does not have a copy of it or is not familiar with it, they can be provided directly. Again, any violations will continue to be logged and to be provided to Heidi and the board upon request, or at the end of the year with a full summary of the data points throughout the year. So no changes to the monitoring and enforcement of the policy are being sought, and finally, we are seeking this renewal for three years. So again, I know that was a very brief presentation, but I know most of you have probably seen this in the past and are familiar with the site. I'm happy to pause now and either take any questions or hand it over to Liz if you have any for her as well, so thank you again for everyone's time this evening.
Thanks, Matt. Addie Mae, do you want to see if the board has any questions for Matt or Liz before we open? Go look at the actual document?
Sure, is there anyone on the board that has a question at this point? I'm sure there'll be other options, opportunities, but from the board, is there anyone that has a question for either Matt or Liz on this, what we've heard so far? I don't believe I'm hearing any, so I think we can continue on.
Great, so I'd like to go through the document, the actual permit decision, and the proposed changes are going to be highlighted in yellow so we can discuss them. And then at the end, open it up to the board for any comments and questions, and then to the public for any common questions, and then back to the board for a final vote. Thank you, Steph, so the what we're changing on the first page, we're just updating routinely from the 2023 decision, changing it to be the 2025 decision. Then on the next paragraph on the final development page, it's more again, because how things accumulate, we're just making this that the prior plans are going to be just incorporated into it, the special permit. So just referencing that, all those same ones before are part of this decision. On the next page, again, it's just going to be updating, we're adding that the 2023 is now part of the prior history. And then the second paragraph down, we have looked, modifying the dates to show when we've published the newspapers and the notices to make it current. And these were the days that we actually published the papers and did the mailings and had the town clerk posting. Again, updating the public hearing date to reflect it, so that that chronological order will be correct for this hearing. The factual background. Last paragraph, we're just going to be changing that to be again that it was renewed back in March, and that it was filed, and when the time when it had been filed prior. And then when the last one was granted, and because we've had this new codification of our zoning bylaws, we've had to change all references to our zoning bylaws to the current terminology sections. So the planning board is number 240, so all of our zoning bylaws will start with 240. The same sections exist, but in just a slightly different syntax. And then the next page. So on this page, it was kind of interesting, Matt and I talked about this because we both had questions on this about an additional 17 or 18 acres of the applicant's land lies in Sherborne. It actually does not, so at some point, the land had been sold from General Motors to some others, and I've checked on our property records. And for quite a few years now, it's been held by at least two different owners. So this is a change I'd like to make, that we're saying that this is going to be for the 6.35 acres out of the approximate 10-acre parcel in Sherborne. And I was, if we can add that language in here. Because it's no longer applicable. And that would be struck. You know, what I found is there's so many cut and paste over the years with the documents, that I think some of these pieces got lost, and most of the updates we have are just updating the cut and paste parts. And then down further. This again is all changing the zoning code new formats. The same thing, zoning code new formats. On this other one. This became kind of a logistical issue, again, it looks like over the years it was done, but Adessa keeps a guard at this, their stations, and it's very hard to know whose new drivers, especially if you've got guards that change, they're not going to know if it's a new driver or not, and with the volume coming through. So we wanted to make the language that businesses will be asked, that Adessa does provide all of this to anyone doing business with Adessa. But we're going to add that Adessa could ask that the businesses to provide the policy to their drivers, so, because they're the ones that are aware of the new drivers. But copies are going to be available onsite for distribution as necessary. It just, it just seemed like it was going to be very hard to follow this, and if anyone has a discussion, please, or a better idea of how to say this, please bring it up. We're trying to make this contract something that will be able to be held up by Adessa if we turn around and say, are you doing this?
Right, I think, just because I know Heidi, you and I have looked at this a lot, and a lot of these little changes that you're going to continue to go forward to reflect back to that this original permit was issued in 1996, before most people had email, before most people had cell phones in their pockets, before most people had and nobody had a smartphone in their pocket, so things of times have changed in how we communicate and how information is shared has changed, so there's some updates that Heidi's going to continue to go through that reflect the kind of change in how we all do business these days.
And in January, I did receive a copy of the reports when they did have drivers that didn't follow the rules, they did document the licenses and tried to follow up with businesses to educate people. They do provide what the route should be, that does not include going up Western Ave. Another one, another area was that they have to clean out the septic site, stormwater drainage area, and they did provide proof of two cleanings. What we've decided is that it'd be easier to say in every January that all these information and packages will be sent over. Or if there's something that comes up, if they have to write a violation letter, they can copy the town on one as it comes along. But there hasn't been a violation letter that I could say, Matt, I don't know if you've known, but I haven't seen anything in the last year.
There has not been any suspension letters, but there have been notices of one single violation, just for
Thank you, okay. Okay. Do you want to elaborate on what the differences between your notice and then your suspension?
Sure, so the policy basically requires that if you have one violation, a notice goes to the company, it provides notice of the name of the driver, and if they refuse to give the name, we acknowledge that and get the, you know, mast DOT and plate numbers and and provide that to the company, so you kind of get one warning, and then after that, you are subject to a suspension. So at that point, any suspension would certainly include notice through Heidi to the planning board of that suspension. But because we mailed them out, it's hard to copy on the original, but we do keep records of that, and that will be part of the end-of-year submission as provided last year, you know, we average anywhere from zero to three, really, so it's still pretty pretty minimal, but is being enforced, and of course, as this reads, and as Heidi mentioned, it can be available on request. But the idea was to simplify it and provide one copy of the whole calendar year, rather than at least annually, we just figured we'd do it in January and kind of capture the whole prior year, if that makes sense to the board.
And then continuing. That too did not need to be have a highlight on, so that there's nothing on that changed. So the next section was written for COVID during COVID times, and it's no longer valid, so there's nothing with a COVID epidemic or disruption. And they talked about, therefore, they made two annual payments on what was made, so I'm suggesting taking that out of this next version. Onto the next page.
Heidi, I'm just slowing down because I see people leaning toward the screen and reading it, is it, is it is it big enough, do you want me to make it bigger?
If you can make it bigger, that'd be great.
Make it bigger, be great.
It's the storm system you were just talking about?
Yeah, so here again, too, we don't need to be send a copy, the cop, we can get an email on this, and we're just going to get, provide evidence of cleanings with the January reports. He, Matt sent me in a copy of the policy they have for the car alarm, so we do have that on file. Um, he he uh, Matt sent me in a copy of the policy they have for the car alarm, so we do have that on file. So I was just highlighting it as a reminder to get it, and we did. And then the last one, we would change it from 24 to 36 months. And the last number 21. It references the 2015 decision, which was to put up the solar panels. It it is probably implied, but I'm going to leave, I would suggest just leaving that in. There's nothing that adds any new conditions, it's just referencing that that was done. And then 22, there was a photometric plan submitted. And I was just going to leave that as is, we've had no complaints or anything since 2018, it looks like from this time either, but it might be good just to keep it in for a historical perspective. So I think that was my initial changes that I went over and and spoke with Matt about. And now we were going to turn it over to the board to see if you had any other feedback or questions or recommendation recommendations.
Um, so I guess, Matt, if you have anything further that you feel needed clarifying or concerns. I think it's, I'm guessing not at this point, because I think you and Heidi have gone through this ad nauseam. Um, so are there any questions um, on the board members?
Maybe the only question that I would have, uh, but I think I heard the answer from uh, Mr. Echo was the the number of uh, times where somebody's not followed the uh, the procedure with uh, coming out of the uh, the parking lot, the garage, the uh, the truck coming out of the parking um, lots going in the wrong direction. I think you said those, that was a pretty small number in a given year. Maybe you just repeat that again for me, please?
Sure. Yeah. So I think it's ranged between uh, several months with zero violations to to one or two months with, you know, four violations. So if I had to put an average, you know, 1.5, I haven't done the math, but one to two is the most typical per month. It's still a relatively small number and and that uh, enforcement is happening.
Um, if there are no further questions from the board?
I have a follow up question to that.
Oh, sure.
Um, are those violations issued on only on exit, I mean, only on entry or on entry and exit, or are you tracking both directions of traffic for that?
Both directions.
Thank you.
The the follow up that I would have is um, are those typically new drivers that are having that as an issue? Um? And is it just a result of they don't know what the rule is and that they didn't, they haven't received the document or or whatever?
Yeah, and I can sorry for interrupting. I can certainly uh, tap in Jack or Liz if they want to speak to it, but certainly some the, I don't want to say the majority, but certainly a good portion of them are getting the policy in the first place and and follow up, and that rectifies it immediately. So uh, the hope is obviously with this revision to the decision, uh, and all companies will have it in place already. And then certainly uh, you know, the issue with enforcement is if they don't give us our name, the name or or take the policy from us right away. Then obviously, that's why we follow up and provide all the information again to uh, to their superiors. But uh, Jack or Liz, if you guys want to speak a little bit more, if you see a a trend, um, but obviously we haven't had any suspensions, so there's no real trend. It tends to be one offs, but
Right, exactly. I think you pretty much covered it, Matt.
Would possibly a a solution be kind of going into more um, modern technology of these days and with uh, that the comment had been made that most people now have cell phones? W- w- would it make sense for there to be a QR code uh, that, you know, a a new driver? You know, if they need to know the rules of the road as they come in, they could see, hey, this is the new rules, you can just click on with your uh, phone and uh, you you have it right there on your uh, on your phone to be able to look at as opposed to having to get the document and then driving away and at some point later possibly reading it and, you know, so on. Would would that possibly help that? Because it sounds like it's still going to be, it sounds like it's in a num- in the range of about 12 to 20 um, situations in a given year.
I'm I'm trying, I I like the idea in principle. I'm just trying to think of implementing it and and executing it and where that would be. And, you know, certainly don't want to have it as you're entering and backing up traffic. So uh, there might be an opportunity to put it put it somewhere. I don't, Liz, again, I have to defer to you if there's a place that would really work to really call everyone's attention to that. I know there's a lot of activity, but
Ideally, it's it sounds, it sounds good. I'm just trying to think of exactly what you're saying is how do you implement that? Um, if it's a new customer that might have you know what I mean? They they've never been here before. Where where are they getting that QR code? You know what I mean? They just might get the the assignment to pick up the vehicle. Um. I don't know, some something to definitely think about. I don't, I just don't know how we would be able to implement that because we're not the ones that are hiring the um, the transporters. I think that when we've met um, kind of throughout the year, as we were just kind of preparing for this evening. Um, there was some discussion on how since this special permit was first created in 1996, some of the practices in the industry have changed. Um, I believe when this was first written, it was really um, you know, the the it was it wa- we didn't have as many independent operators as we do these days, that the the industry has changed significantly. Um, I I do know that um, Liz and everyone at a Dessa, they've been working on utilizing technologies that they do have, and we do, you know, therefore, maybe it's not a QR code, but that, you know, having email these days, that was not something that we had in 1996 and um, having policies on the website clearly stated and websites were not in in place in 1996. So um, I think there are a number of opportunities to provide that education.
If that's the case, is that something that should be stated then in this document?
Um, I I mean, I don't know whether planning board members feel that it needs to be spelled out any further. We we've asked for it to be um, the information is going to be yeah, a Dessa is responsible for ensuring that all businesses who do business with them, which would be anyone, any of the various um, car dealerships that might be coming to pick up a car will all be informed of this information.
Yeah, we just try to, we could bring that number down, that's all. Sorry, Steph.
I was just going to say that the agreement here, the special permit would require them to distribute the policy. So I don't I think prescribing the ma- the means in which they distribute it might be a little much for um, gi- given that they're they're saying that it's not exactly clear how that would be implemented. The requirement is there, it's just the means and methods, you know, we could maybe leave up to them.
If there's no further questions from board members, um, I will open it to members, um, residents who are in attendance this evening. I believe we have a number of residents from Western Avenue who have been into have this as an interest. Um. I guess I'm just looking to see if there's any hands raised, um, residents wishing to ask any questions or thoughts. Um, I've got Seth Malloy.
Yep. Seth Malloy, 176 Western Ave. Um, I just wanted to point out one thing. Firstly, I'm super appreciative of what you guys are doing. Um, you know, uh, trying to keep this enforcement in place and doing the tracking and everything. It's really, really, um, it means a lot to us. One thing that I I just didn't want to raise, I'm not looking to amend anything, but um, maybe you can think about ways to curtail this. There are drivers that that consciously try to get around this this rule. I don't know if um, if you, it, what I think it's called, so it's an electrical supply place just past a Dessa on the right side, if you're coming north. You know, they've had to put up signs that say no U-turns because the trucks will come up and then they'll pass and they'll do a U-turn either in the intersection or they'll do it in that parking lot. And then they'll come back and take the right turn so that they're not violating. Or when they come out, they'll take a left and they'll do the similar kind of U-turns up there and then try to come back down. And I've, you know, I've seen that with my own eyes multiple times. Um, I don't know if it needs to be part of the permit, but just something that you're aware of. Um, maybe you can think about ways to address that. That's all.
Uh, Lee, I believe you had your hand raised. Oops, you're on mute. I can't hear you, Lee, or somehow your speaker is not on. Still can't hear you, Lee. I don't know why.
Is that any better?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I have a new computer today and I'm still working. So sorry. Um. I- in line with what Seth said, if the the driver is taking one of these evasive turns, and I know that was brought up the last time this permit was renewed, uh, would the monitor uh, note that also and send out the same uh, notices? Uh, because I know that was one of Sean Colleen's concerns last time is that they were going up to uh, you know, brush a lab and other places and and turning around. So uh, I'm asking the Dessa folks, will that also be recorded?
Lee, could you give your address too for the record?
Yeah, I did. 12 Ames Drive. Sorry.
No, we didn't hear them. Thank you.
Uh, to me, that certainly sounds like it, you know, violates the spirit of the rule and what we're trying to do. I I I'll defer to Liz, if, you know, we've ever heard that from any of the guards or anyone on. Uh, certainly, I apologize, I wasn't here the last go around, so it's new information to me and um, certainly to me violates the spirit of this rule and this agreement. So uh, if it was brought to our attention or it was um uh, it was seen and then documented, then yeah, I I think that violates the rule as well, and we would certainly want to document that and send that notice because the rule is not to come down Western Ave.
Right, thank you.
Uh, Dan, if you have your hand raised, if you'll just say your name and address again, too.
Uh, certainly. Dan Petrosinelli and Dorothy Ferranti, 262 Western Ave. Um, I want to echo Lee and Seth's comments. Again, thank you to the board and to all of the members of the Dessa. We really do appreciate what it is you're trying to do for us and protect our neighborhood. Um, my biggest concern, and I think that's what everybody is saying, is right now enforcement. Uh, I I hear what Mr. Echo said about zero to three violations. I can tell you in our very short period of time that we've owned this house, there's been times within a week that there's been three, four, maybe five tractor trailer trucks coming by the house. So whether it's done intentionally or by accident, there are car carriers coming by at high rates of speed on a regular basis. So I I'm just concerned that if we delay notice until once a year in January, there's no opportunity for us to act. If there's a challenge on enforcing this, there's really no way for us to uh, communicate that or get back to anyone. So I would ask people to reconsider on how often we're notified. And I think there should be easier ways, whether it's on a website, posting it on the town website or some way of notifying residents on of these violations and how what we can do to correct them. I mean, I'm I'm even reading one of the paragraphs that there's Jersey barriers that are set up to limit the trucks from turning. And I I just question how those barriers can be in place, and yet I'm still seeing trucks come by the house all the time.
But a a couple of quick thoughts, Dan, and thank you, thank you for the feedback. Um, first of all, on the decision, the 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 prior decision said at least once annually, which is why we just put January to try to have a target time as opposed to have that floating. Uh, we are open and the decision currently reads for upon request. So if if Heidi or the board were to get kind of an excessive amount of complaints, then, you know, we're obviously documenting documenting this throughout the year. That was just to have a target point to ensure it happens. Um, in terms of the tractor trailers going by, uh, understandably, us being right next door, uh, probably catch a lot of the blame. I would point out, obviously, our agreement is only for our site. We can't control anyone going past us and, you know, further into Framingham. Um, but if, you know, if if not to put the neighbors on watch for sure, but if you see something happen and we're going to have in this decision, um, and by request, both Liz and uh, Garrett contact information, you know, if you see something and you want to report it, we will have people available and you can also get in touch, obviously, with Heidi. So um, those are the two comments in response to yours. We're certainly trying to be good neighbors and work with you. We are, we're enforcing this policy every time we see fit. Uh, again, I can't control every truck that comes down the street, as you know. Uh, and I think the natural inclination is to think they're probably coming to our site, but that's that's in fact, not always the case. So I would just, you know, put that back on record and Liz, I don't know if you had anything further to respond. I know
No, I was, I was literally just going to say the same thing. Not every um, tractor trailer is is coming to our facility. There's a lot of dealerships on Route 9 and um, that's pretty much exactly what you just said, Matt.
I I will clarify my statement, though. These are car car carriers. So I I want to make sure I'm clear on that. There's also a paragraph, though, that does reference that signage could be put up on Western Avenue and 16. And that would be at the cost of a Dessa. Is there something, because it it sounds like if we put some type of acknowledgement that there is a restriction for a Dessa owned vehicles or a Dessa supported vehicles? That if they see that signage on Western Avenue in 16, perhaps that'll stop them? Again, my biggest concern i- is enforcement and and I sincerely appreciate what it is that you're trying to do for us, but if it's not enforced, it doesn't really help us. And and the property that we have, it's a lovely piece of property. We want to continue to invest in it. We want to grow in it. We want to make a life there. But I I can tell you, it's a very dangerous area that we're in, more so than I think anyone else on the street right now. And and while we can talk about whether the car carrier is associated with a Dessa or not, I would venture to guess that the majority of them are. And they travel at a substantial rate of speed in a very small road on a corner that is very, very dangerous. And sometimes they're carrying four, five, six cars, sometimes they're empty, but it's not a two car carrier as defined in the permit. It's often, there's a lot of violations. So again, sincerely appreciate what it is you're trying to do for us. But I'm asking that there's some further restrictions on enforcement, because without enforcement, the agreement doesn't really matter.
Addie May, do you have any update on the um traffic calming that that um, Sean was looking into?
Yes, I mean, that's, you know, it's it's not related to the permit, but it it is going to assist with speeds on Western Avenue. Um, the feedbacks, radar feedback signs have been ordered. Um, it's in a six to eight weekly timed as we're ordered in January, so um, we'll, those will go on either end, one near the intersection of Brook Street and one um, probably further up on near the straightaway is kind of entering from Framingham onto Western Avenue to give um, drivers some kind of heads up that they're exceeding speeds. And uh, we, it there'll be the same type of feed, speed feedback signs that we have in the center of town with messages um, which have been shown to have some um, impact and do collect radar data that we are able to collect. And so the it's anticipated that those are going to be received and will be installed this spring. And Sean has met with the surveyor and um, has had discussions with the um, road construction. We are under contract with Lynch Company, who did the roundabout in town, and we are continue to be under contact with them. And so um, there will be at least four um, what they're called splitter islands for traffic calming installed on Western Avenue along several of the various straightaways. And those will create pinch points which will slow traffic down, uh, regardless of whether it's a, you know,
And and Addie, with all respect, I I do appreciate that, and that's that's the ownership of the town. I guess I'm still looking toward enforcement assistance and help from a Dessa. And the signage that I was referring to is actually in uh, section four, paragraph three of the permit, which actually talks about um, uh, with the approval of the selectmen in the police department, signage could be put on Western Avenue at the intersection of Western Ave and Route 16. And that would be on a Dessa, and that could be something addition to what the town is trying to do. So again, I I don't mean to come across as unappreciative. We we are very appreciative. I I'm, I just want people to be uh, aware of the need for enforcement. If you live on Western Ave and if you experience the traffic level and the impact of a Dessa, I think you'd understand why I'm asking these questions. And I and I think we unfortunately, uh, again, we love the neighborhood, we love the town. We didn't realize this when we invested in the home, but unfortunately, I think we're probably in the worst possible position on that road. And a Dessa is one of the major contributors to that.
So I'm, I appreciate that, and um, I I'm looking at the language here and the way it's written is um, you know, again, this was written a number of years ago, and it's like many things that just keeps getting passed along, passed along. Um,
And I just want to make sure we we separate because because what you've said about what the town wants to do for traffic uh, uh, management is just wonderful, but there's a limited budget that we receive from a Dessa to work on that. And once that budget's gone, we we won't be able to do anything more to that. What I'm asking for is is a Dessa to own some of the uh, enforcement What I'm asking for is is Adessa to own some of the enforcement. And if this is already in the agreement, maybe this is one thing that could be, could help us with.
I think you have to talk with Chief Galvin to see what he would feel is needed for traffic.
Did I, um, I don't know how to raise my hand here except physically raise my hand. This is Sarah Dusa, 255 Western Ave. I just wanted to quickly reiterate what Dan just said. In fact, we live right across the street from Dan and and it's true, just in the past few days, we've seen quite a few car carriers more than with the capacity of more than two and sometimes carrying none, sometimes carrying, you know, five or six. And they do speed and it's the where Dan is and we're right across the street is an extremely busy corner. But I think putting something at 16 that would just tell if, you know, you can't go to Adessa up this road if you're, you know, if you have a capacity for more than two cars. I don't know. I think that's a great idea. I think it's a fabulous idea.
Again, Sarah, that's something you can't say you cannot limit the cars going up Adessa. I mean, that's, we we talked about that with the traffic safety and it's a concern that the town can impose a restriction like that. I think there's some things that we can do, but I know with the police chief, they were saying they're not going to go and try and you, you, you're going to close the traffic to say you can't go up here to Adessa because that means now you're going to send them to Holliston, which we can't do. You're going to send them to Coolidge Street, which that neighbor is going to say the same thing that they want truck limits going up. We have to be very careful of what type of warning signs would say.
Agreed, and I'm not asking for anything outside of what this permit already states. Mid-states that at Adessa's expense, they'll install some acknowledgement. If it's, if it's nothing more than a sign that says anything over a two-car carrier cannot go, we're not limiting traffic. We're not telling traffic they can't go. All we're doing is notifying them what this permit already states.
Well, the permit would only allow us to say a two, you know, anything greater than than a two-car carrier may not go to Adessa, but we can't, unfortunately, the reality is is we, the state has already said we can't do a truck exclusion and therefore we can't say that to anything greater than a two-car carrier may not travel Western Avenue to go to a different dealership on Route nine.
May I offer like some just stock language just for consideration? Would, could be something like, "Adessa policy prohibits truck use of Western Ave to access their facility," or something like that, where it's very clear that it's tied to Adessa's policies and not a truck. You know, I I guess I'm just suggesting it because, you know, the planning board is, you know, the way that this is worded is that it needs to be requested by the police department. That makes sense because it should, it should stem out of a safety concern, right? And but there could be some example language provided to the police department that could be helpful and maybe that's I'm happy to to help brainstorm some of that verbiage for consideration.
Thank you.
Well, I think we'll have to ask Liz and Matt, should the police chief come up and a recommendation saying he'd like to have a caution sign or some other small language put up? Would Adessa be willing to pay for that sign if that's what the police chief comes up with?
I think in theory, we're obviously happy to to work with the board and the town, you know, there is substantial, you know, mitigation kind of baked into this already. I have no idea what the installation of that sign would be if we're talking, you know, not going to put up a piece of cardboard, but it's going to have to be something substantial that's not a public safety thing. So we're open to the idea, but we, you know, I I think there's also a conversation to be had, you know, about the other mitigation money and can that somehow somehow work together? Because I I do know there's two standalone conditions within this decision as written. Again, that was written a long time ago, so we're, we're open to that. That's obviously what the policy states and what we enforce. But in in terms of implementation and and cost, you know, it's not something that we had talked previously about, so we're certainly open to have that conversation with the police chief and and the select, selectmen moving forward.
Thank you very much.
We took Dave in 12 Ames Drive. One other question, given that we all have cell phone cameras. What information do you need for us to send to you if we see a violation? We do the license plate, is that sufficient? You'd see the context. What else is needed?
I think when we're talking about violation, we're talking about you're seeing it turn in from Western Ave onto our property or exiting, correct? Because like we said before, car carry, I've seen the car carriers go right by our place and they're, they're heading over to Framingham to Route nine.
Yeah, I mean, we're not at your facility. We see them coming up and down here and I think, you know, while there are a few car dealerships up on Route nine that they could be going to, we've seen enough of them turning around, as Seth said, you know, and doing things like that. No, they're, they're part of Adessa. So I'm just simply trying to find a way to say, hey, here's the license plate, here's the carrier or something like that. And say, oh, yeah, that's one of ours. It's not. We'll send them a letter. We'll include them in our violation. Some, some way to do that. I can't presuppose that, you know, we're going to somehow see them coming into your facility because we don't live right there.
Right.
No, but if it's someone speeding on the street, that would go to our police chief, not to Adessa, you know, and and there is, Adessa is going to be giving us the name. It's going to be Liz's number and another person at there that we will have for citizen complaints of of someone for you to send them to Adessa. So I think, Lee, what you're saying is if you do see that, but it really is going to have to be what happens at it. This is dealing with Adessa's property, not Western Ave in general, as far as here's a carrier going up at a fast speed, that would have to go to Chief Galvin.
I'm not talking about speed here.
Okay, if it's going in, if it's going in or turning around.
Yeah, but I'm not, we're not going to see it there. And I think we know that enough of these carriers are violating the rule. So I'm trying to find a way that we can bridge that gap and I'm not hearing anything, I guess, is what it is.
Well, lead to your question. I mean, what we take down is license plate, mass DOT number, the the company name. We we try to get the driver's name unless they refuse, which you'll never get the driver's name, obviously. So, yeah, any identification is is fine. That's what, that's what we do. It's just connecting the dots then to make sure they then illegally turned in or turned around to our property.
If you know the carrier and the the date and time, you're going to know whether it's someone who's been in and out of your facility or not, right?
In, yeah, in in theory, so I mean, if you have, you have the, I mean, again, you can't be cross-referencing five or 10 a day if you're just taking pictures because we don't know if they're coming in or out all the time. But if you see someone blatantly speeding and we can cross-reference it and see if 30 seconds later, they ended up at our site, then that's, that would help with enforcement.
Not speeding, it's simply use, you know, I I appreciate that there could be carriers going to other facilities, but you know, that's what I'm trying to figure out, the way to identify which of those are part of Adessa.
And and for the clarification, for the clarification as well, I I'm not, I know I've said speeding a few times, but I I'm not suggesting that Adessa is responsible for the speed. I do agree with others in Town Planner that that's something for the police. That's not what we're suggesting. What we're suggesting is tracking the use. And and I think as a neighborhood, there's probably ways that we could do that, setting up cameras or something. I know it sounds a little ridiculous, but that's probably something we can do to to track it.
And and if, again, we have, we have Liz on and Garrett from the company who would take citizen complaints or or deal directly with myself or Heidi. So any of the, any of the methods that I mentioned, the the company name, the mass DOT number, any of those will happily take the information and and cross-reference however we can.
Thank you. And and Miss Echo and Miss Moore, too, I think you're, you hear that we're trying to do something from the town and the town's looking to invest in some way for traffic management. Again, we we appreciate what's in this agreement to try to help us with the budget and financing on that. I I believe the 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 number comes up with a a four-hour minimum, eight, however it's calculated, but it's, it's the same amount that's been in this permit, I think, for the last 10-plus years with with the increased cost of living, I'm assuming there's probably a higher cost associated with the traffic. Would there be some consideration perhaps with Adessa that could help us a little bit more so that when the town goes to put something in, we're not expire, we're not going through a budget so quickly and not able to do what we need to do to do traffic management? Is there a way that maybe we could look at what that reimbursed cost would be?
Well, the cost does go up as the police, because our police detail cost goes up every year, too. So that cost of living increase and things is kind of built into this contract because it's not a contract and amount, it's whatever the going rate is. So that will reflect some of our budget costs.
Are we in a situation as a town where we're able to put the traffic management that we want to with the current reimbursement we get for the budget? I mean, is the, is that sufficient, what we're seeing?
The plans that the 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 radar feedback signs and the speed splitter islands are are covered, so.
And the fees.
I mean, that was, that was part of the town meeting.
Town meeting and the fees.
And the fees, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, by the fees that were, that were the, the, you know, the the kind of collected Adessa funds over the years, which had gone into a general fund because we didn't have the accounting mechanism for splitting it until we had a recent town meeting to correct that, so. It's, it's, Adessa's funds have covered, are covering it and you know, as Heidi said, the the increase has happened. The, you know, the the increase, the the rate is increased based on, because it's based on what the current rate of pay for our police salaries for traffic detail. And the police are aware of this issue. And, you know, we do have, now that we are in a regional dispatch, we have more officers that are out there patrolling the streets since they're not required to sit at the desk as often. So they are out there and Sherburne is quickly becoming known as a place to abide by traffic safety rules.
You know, Dan, if if you are seeing, I mean, good data would be if you're seeing the same truck violating repeatedly, if you're writing down and getting the same data, I mean, that might be something we don't have right now, that that could be something we could ask Adessa, say, hey, we've got three calls in the last two weeks on this same truck driver. Is this, and then ask, is this one that does go to Adessa?
I will, and that's, that's a very reasonable ask. The the challenge is, is I'm sometimes in the house when it's coming by or I'm in the yard.
Right.
Out by my stone wall as it flies by me and, you know, I'm wondering if I'm still alive. But what I will do, I I think if there's probably a way where we can install some cameras and we'll just have the cameras take pictures all day long. That's the only way I think we could keep track of it. And that's why that that goes back to the enforcement. So again, I understand your question. I respect it and I, and it's a fair question, but it it's, it's now incumbent on everyone, all of us neighbors to go through the expense of Wi-Fi and installation and putting cameras up and track traffic all day long to come back and show this. And that's, that's what I'm hearing the resolution is. And if that's what we need to do, then that's what I'm happy to do.
Yeah, or or can you snap a picture with your phone if you just happen to see it?
If I am there, I absolutely will.
Let me just chime in there because I have tried to capture information on these trucks and they go by so fast, you cannot do it. You cannot get a license plate number. I've been standing out just, you know, taking the, my groceries out of the car and one goes by and I I still can't get it. It because it happened so quickly that you need a camera. You absolutely need a camera.
Will that capture it enough? I mean, or is it going to get too fast for the cameras, too? That's, I don't want you spending money and finding you still can't capture that data.
And I, you know, why did I hear it was illegal for for us to take pictures of traffic?
I I don't know. I'd have to ask the police chief.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's legal, but we ought to look into that.
I'll have Lee do it, then. If it's illegal, I'll ask Lee to do it.
Okay.
He looks ready and willing over there.
But again, you know, Matt and Liz, I apologize. I know I'm probably coming across as as I I'm not trying to stop anything. I sincerely appreciate everything that you're doing. I have an open invitation to have dinner, lunch, anything over my house anytime you want. Even on the weekend, we'll do a cookout. You are more than welcome to come over because I don't want you to think that we're exaggerating and trying to ask for something that it isn't due to us. So again, I apologize if I'm coming across that way, but I am telling you, it it is serious. It's not just because of the speed, it's because of the amount and the amount of traffic and who they are. And these are heavy trucks when they're coming by with four, five, six cars sometimes. Somebody is going to get severely hurt on the street. And when that happens, instead of having a nice conversation like this about enforcement, there's going to be legal and lawsuits and and that's the worst thing. We don't want to see that happen. So again, it's an open invitation over at my house, our house, anytime. We'll serve the wine, we'll serve the food. You can come and just sit out in front yard and you can see what happens. I I I want you to at least experience that what we're asking for is is, I think, fair and reasonable. But again, I I'll stop questions now and I sincerely appreciate you giving me the floor for a little while and allowing me to voice my opinion.
If I could just jump in for a second, Eric and Terry Luskin, we're 263 Western, right across from Dan and next door to Sarah. Overflow parking for that event can be in our driveway. I'd love to just, again, echo what what Dan is saying, that we appreciate what the board and what Adessa is doing. But for a lot of safety reasons, the frequency is indeed problematic. I just wanted to second what what Dan has been saying and and Sarah as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I believe what I'm hearing, I mean, it's, it's something that we will, you know, Adessa is, we've got some new follow-up formats, not new, but just kind of a cleaned up process and renewed clarification on how to distribute information to the various businesses coming to and from Adessa. And, you know, I guess as far as outside of the exclusion that we just will be, need to be monitored and continue to share and have a dialogue with Adessa. Are there any other concerns that need to be brought up this evening before we vote as a board?
Addie May, I guess I want to bring up if there's a concern of annual reports or do they want them semi-annual, if that's something that the residents would rather have it on a semi-annual reporting basis? Or do we leave it January? What does the planning board feel?
I feel that what I heard was that if we needed the information sooner, we could request it. But that if we have it on a regular basis, whether it be annual, that we set the date for that report to be provided. I'm okay with 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 that as the mechanism.
Along with having a means of contacting you directly, Heidi.
I think that was your number we gave out, Jim.
Everyone seems to have it.
Dan has another question.
So are you, sorry, Dorothy, are you stating that if the residents would like a report sooner, we could ask you, we could just call the town and that's how we would receive it and then you would request it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So if we just happen to see like an uptick of things, we can just go ahead?
And we can ask and see if we see a a pattern or something going, yeah.
Okay, and just a question for Matt. So earlier when we were talking about the turnaround, would are there people stationed at Adessa who actually can see that happening?
I mean, I guess it would depend on where that turnaround exactly was was taking. And Liz, you know, the geography better than I do.
Yeah, I was a little confused on the turn. I thought they were talking about we have guards right where you can actually for a tractor trailer to even take a left-hand turn, they can't. Because the Jersey barriers, they would, they would never be able to. So if they want to turn around anywhere and they're coming down Western Avenue, they'd be turning around somewhere in Framingham because they can't take that left-hand turn. We've made it for that reason. So it's actually a hassle for them to actually, if they're coming to our property, to actually come down because they won't be able to take that left-hand turn. If someone tries to come out, it seemed we have guards at two gates and and there's guards right there that can see everything. But as far as the turnaround that you guys are referring to, I'm not really sure.
It's up near the, up near the fire station. So your guards will not see it.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks. I was like, okay.
It's where the fire station, either inside that intersection where they go just past that and go into that. I think it's called Electric City, the the brick building with the electric company, electrical supply place. And there's an ambulance depot back there, too. It's a huge parking lot. Snow's Garage is there. Sometimes they turn around there, but they've put up signs since like no, no tractor trailer U-turns.
In Framingham.
Yeah, in Framingham.
I mean, internally, we can certainly let the guards know to keep an eye on if a truck flies by and then you see the same one two minutes later, obviously. Something, something afoot, but oth- other than, you know, if you can't see the turnaround spot, I'm not sure how else, but we're, we're certainly happy. Something something afoot, but o- o- other than, you know, if you can't see the turnaround spot, I'm not sure how else, but we're we're certainly happy to kind of circulate that information. And have another mechanism of enforcement.
Well, what I'm hearing is if I'm tailing one and I see them do the turnaround, I should do the turnaround too and then. You know, have my my dash cam record them go into Odessa. And provide that to you.
Yeah, I think that communication though, Matt, that you just mentioned would be helpful, like just putting them on alert for that. I mean, these are the things we have to do, right? Like sometimes all the little bits combined together are helpful. Um it's unfortunate that that location isn't framing him because then that means that we can't put a police detail there. Cause that was the other question I was gonna ask if it's sure, then we could have a police detail there as opposed to like down the street. In our driveway, which has been helpful, but that would basically. Solve that other issue that we're basically saying is, you know, people are going around those regulations. Thank you.
I will say I have seen less um since you've put, you did the work along Western, I have in Framingham. There's like a sidewalk and so it made the road a lot narrower because they used to turn around there as well, but now they can't.
Yep, exactly.
That definitely help.
Thank you.
Okay, so um. I think this has been a good discussion. I think I really appreciate the residents of Western Avenue coming out and listening to what's being said. And listening and also sharing what they're seeing because um it's helpful for everyone to know. And I appreciate what Jack and Liz and Matt have done. Um Odessa in taking time to hear our concerns and um attempting to address concerns. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to um. Renew the special permit for Odessa for the period of three years. Has moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to take a roll call vote. Um Addie May Weiss is an I. Rob Wolf.
Aye.
Frank Hope.
Aye.
Steph Harrison.
Aye.
And Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Alright, the motion, the uh special permit has been approved unanimously. And um as Heidi mentioned, we will, she'll be um reaching out to everyone to. Ensure that we can each sign the special permit. It does require all of us to actually sign the special permit.
I'm chair members of the board. Thank you very much for your time and consideration and and thank you to everyone else who came out and shared their thoughts. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time and for listening to us.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Thank you. Addie May, do you want to make a motion to close the hearing?
Yes, I I make a motion to close the hearing for the special permit for renewal for Odessa.
At eight.
Uh at eight fifteen P M. So I made the motion, Frank has seconded, all in favor, Addie May Weiss, I, Frank Hope.
Aye.
Uh Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Bob Wolf.
Aye.
Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is officially closed. The uh let's see, next item on our agenda, I believe we are talking about. Warrant article preparation. Um we have some PowerPoint slides that were. Created um in preparation for the meeting with advisory on Wednesday, March twelfth. Kind of just as before those go up, I will say that um. You know, this, these slides are gonna look very basic, they're black and white and not colorful and we're worried about content. And after the content is cleaned up, then um there's a number of ways to make them look more artist- artistically aesthetically pleasing. So um step view, uh let's see, what's the best way to dive in? Um you know, Heidi had sent out kind of rough, those rough slides and they're really into the various. Was it four bean categories? There's the. Three A multifamily overlay district, there's the. Um accessory dwelling by law. Update um warrant article discussion and there's the. Flood floodplain mandated flood floodplain district and then there is the um. Integration zoning by law. Reform. People, we're trying to come up with not not housekeeping, there's another word that we were trying to start using instead of housekeeping.
The updates.
Updates, just updates, just. Right, um so I I guess. I don't know, do we really need to go through the floodplain one? I don't know. I mean, I mean, that's the most straightforward because there's really nothing to say except for just we accept.
Right, I I'd like if people look and just say, get the way in of the board and say, yes, this this sums up. Um the concept to me of the PowerPoints was trying to do an overview to summarize what each thing was and that people could follow along. Um with it so that we don't sit here and and bring up every single line at these meetings. Uh we have the advisory meeting on the twelfth, we have the advisory select board meeting on the twenty-second, which is a public hearing. And then we have the uh town meeting on April twenty-ninth. So. The feedback I'm getting is people are very concerned about our zoning articles. They feel we're going to a second night. They think these are confusing. They look at it, they see all kinds of words. So I'm hoping that our PowerPoints will be to simplify this overview a little bit.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add um. That although there were, I was a little surprised by the discussion at advisory. It seemed to to be led by one, one of the advisory committee members. But there was balance in the discussion too, because some of the other advisory members were talking about. The process that was followed and the outreach that's been the extensive outreach that's already been done, so. I'm hopeful that it was just the sort of lack of. Knowledge of that one person on how much outreach has already been done um to get to this point. Um I'll just leave it at that.
Um yeah, I guess on to that point, I guess um. I know I sent everyone a list of all of our YouTube meetings and I guess that's, I didn't want to put them ready to go there, I guess. I think that's separate of just looking at the slides and how we're going to present, but um. I I did some further work just kind of cleaning it up and let's see, I can actually, I can share real quick just. Cause I um apologies, hang one second here, I'll just. So I I I haven't, I yeah, mostly was just trying to um. Come up with a list because it's not the easiest to find all the YouTube videos. And I'd like this to at least ideally be on our website somewhere for anyone that's interested. Um that just have the links for each of the YouTube videos and I don't wanna be too defensive. I haven't figured out exactly what to say yet. I have a million thoughts in my head, but kind of just. One, I was thinking and and maybe we can as a board come up with the one paragraph that just says. You know, that really we're we're doing. This is not as onerous as it appears um. And that would be the letter and 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 not, you know, not to beat anyone over the head, maybe just highlight exactly when our three hearings were. Which were December seventeenth, January twenty-eighth and continued, um let's see, we had the. December seventeenth and then we had the other posted hearing on the zoning bylaws was the twenty-eighth. And then we continued on February fourth um and so that we did have full hearings on these as well as. Just about every single meeting that we had over the last year. Going back to February thirteenth of twenty twenty-four. We have been discussing various points of the bylaws um that, you know. February thirteenth, we talked about all of these, you know, Chris Kenny came on and introduced a bunch of these things that he's been. Managing and and that would love to clean up and. It just keep the can keep getting kicked down the road. And it was gonna be too much to try to bring forward to town meeting in twenty twenty-four and could we keep talking and? If we had a year, which we have, we could maybe have it ready for the following town meeting. So that was would be this current town meeting. So that was where we were in February of twenty twenty-four and I guess that just my. Only intent and if you, if anyone has ideas about how to better address this, that was kind of where I was. Thinking that was my, what was going on in my head and kind of as I was doing this, it really did look and. We talked about. This bylaw and the discussion has been thoughtful and detailed.
There's there's a process for milestones that need to be met, particularly with the um three A materials. And that follows the schedule and. That's been adhered to and publicized.
Yeah, the three A slide deck too has has that. List of dates, so.
So the the um bylaws, yeah, they're technical and detailed, but. A lot of that's housekeeping, there's no agenda, if you know, the one complaint I heard about an agenda. Might be the sign issue, but that's been withdrawn, so I don't think there's anything really to speak of there.
I guess going back to, so is there a, I guess, is there any, should we do a letter to? Advisory or do we just move on and maybe just post on our website for transparency, all the links? Or what is, what do people think?
I I, pardon me, try and, I think it's a good idea, I I I maybe do it one per category. You know, have like the three A and and what have we done for the three, what have we done for the uh, you know, the very different thing that we've been doing. Uh first of all, and and second of all. I think bringing this up in the form, maybe in a PowerPoint presentation for our presentation with advisory. To kind of address that and and then to go over it just to. Help clarify the point that we we don't have an agenda, we are doing updates, we are doing, you know, the requirements and we've. We've provided we've the opportunity for the community to have input into it and um. You know, it was Dan Sickle, that was the person on advisory that uh it helped to clarify the. That we did follow the A process and that if we were to postpone this, I would, we would just be. Repeating a process that we've already done and we've already met the requirements for, so you know, I I I. I think we need to, if we do that, that would help and then the secondary thing is to try to. Highlight also that the things that we're trying to get accomplished aren't anything that has an agenda or that anything that. We're trying to push something through that there is. It hasn't been a lot of visibility as well on that we haven't given the opportunity for visibility.
Um Heidi and Steph, what do you think for for kind of managing tonight and not, I mean, it's eight twenty-five, should we go through the? Should I stop sharing and should we go through the slides first and then? Figure out, I mean, those slides we'll we'll use on next, next week, next Wednesday. And then I guess come back to the question on what we, I guess, and then I guess the question about a letter to. Share ahead with, cause Heidi, you were planning to share those slides ahead of time with advisory. I mean, maybe it's just a one paragraph saying, here's our slides and, you know, we we and just break it up, there's really just. And I think I I'd said there's three mandated updates and clean up and it was going to try and just not write too much because. Then you start getting into, I mean, if you say. We did this, we did that, we did, you know, that's all kind of here.
I mean, I I'm I'm in agreement with Frank that I just, I don't, I don't think a letter to the select board is is necessary. I do.
Not just like what did advisory.
Uh advisory, I do think it would be a great idea to have these lists of links. Um you know, by by warrant article. Which means many of the links will repeat, right? Because we discuss multiples at at different meetings. But to have it by warrant article and and maybe just reference it when Heidi sends over the slides to say, here's the slides. We've also posted onto our website this, so it doesn't feel like it's a direct like.
Okay.
Response, but it's just, but it's, you know, available, should you decide to want more information, you know?
Yeah, no, that's that's a good point. So I I guess, yeah, that makes it clean. So I can reorganize this and like you say, some of these, some of these. Meetings will repeat because um like this one was really just the, you know, the zoning updates. And so that it'll be this one as well as then there was a September. Yeah, uh seven, September seventeenth, again, we went with Chris Kenny and again, the fifteenth and November and then. Uh they start getting back into MBTA and yeah, so I could, I could. Or reorganize this list so that it's not necessarily chronological by date, but also by subject, okay?
Or you could do a chronological list of links and then put four columns. For the four bylaws and say we discussed this one and these two and all four of them, you know? If that's easier rather than repeating information, so make it a table, right, with like. This information on the left column and then four more columns, one for each bylaw and just put a check mark. We talked about this bylaw on this date, these two. At this meeting, we discussed all four of them, you know, just.
Yeah.
Or if it's easier, just have a.
It, I think it'd be easier than redoing the list and duplicating everything, but but that's just format, like I guess.
This is, I just, I would copy and paste and. Just the header, you know, here's these, all these meetings related to this bylaw, all these, all these meetings related and it just, we scroll down and.
The benefit of that is that then you could also put it onto the website that way and you can for the website.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, alright, so I think that does make sense. And again, we don't want to be defensive, um you're right, there was more balance than it's just, you know, one voice, it's always the squeaky. We squeaky wheel against the oil, but um so if everyone's okay, I will. Just organize this by bylaw. And Heidi will have that available on the website and she will just share this when she shares the slides with advisory ahead of next Wednesday's meeting.
What would you um title this on the uh on the website? Um warrant article.
Public meetings.
Public meetings. And I, you know, again, I would bold the ones that were the hearing versus, you know, when we were just having discussion and deliberation, so. Um I think it's, I think we can, you know, make this organized so that it it. Makes it visible and visually supportive of of what we've done. And and at least it makes it an easy place for people to go to these meeting links. So.
We could say record of public meetings.
Yeah.
And then have this.
I I would organize it similar to the way um the land development projects are organized on the town website. You have a block that fits a certain category and then all the links that are chronologically arranged after that, which.
I don't think I can, I I'm not gonna ask, well, I mean, Heidi, I don't know what you think, but I I think it's gonna be that we're posting a document. That has live links on it. Um we can't rebuild the website. I can't ask Jeannie to do that.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
I think it should be entitled something with um, you know, annual town meeting, planning board warrant. Detailed information or something to that extent so that people can quickly see that this is further background information. For warrant articles for the ATM from the planning board.
I think we just said background information on warrant articles, maybe that's the title. Yeah. Well, we'll come up with something and see what genie success suggests.
That said, I do think that some of the comments may have been, do you remember when we had that really heated sign discussion and? Um that's when some of the advisory members were weighing in heavily um. And may have recalled that is in some of the comments they made, but because that one wasn't as sort of fleshed out. As the other ones were at the time, just because of the speed at which it was thrown together. Um I wonder if they even, if it's even clear that that's not in the warrant anywhere. Or if it's assumed that it's sort of like tucked into one of the articles, but to that end. Because remember we had discussed it and then we discussed some other articles and then we came back to it at the end and pulled it. So there may not even be like a recognition that it was pulled and but but at the time, Dan Sickle had suggested that. Or had stated that he would give the planning board some space in the all-day Saturday hearing. To say something about the signage bylaw. So um maybe we could just you take, use that as a as a way to kind of diffuse. Any suggestion of, you know. I I don't like, I just, anyway, I I drafted some language for talking points. Addie May, I sent it over to you. Would it be okay if we shared it?
Actually, yes, Steph, and and actually, and at the um hearing on. Actually, yes, definitely. And actually, and at the, um, hearing on, uh, next Wednesday, I would like for you to read that step. I thought it was well worded and I appreciate it and I would like you to be the one to read that. But yes, please share it with the board. I'm gonna stop sharing right now.
This is a draft for consideration. It's not baked. It was just kind of off the top of my head this afternoon. Um, and it's written very conversationally because I plan to deliver it verbally.
You want to read it?
You want me to read it? Okay. So we want to take a moment to acknowledge one bylaw that is not in the warrant this year. At the urging of residents, planning board entertained several approaches to modifying the zoning bylaws to further restrict signage. At the heart of the matter, the planning board's proposal was to limit the lighting and size. Of certain signs that are currently exempt from requirements. Because we do not believe that the residents of Sherburne want our town to be a billboard town. Maybe I say, however, at a public hearing on this topic and at the strong urging of representatives from select board and advisory. The planning board decided to defer this bylaw to a future warrant for several reasons. First, good points were raised in the public hearing about the complexity of the bylaw and potential unintended consequences. These need to be evaluated. Second, it was clear that the topic was divisive. And some points of discussion appeared to be emotionally charged. After all, one unprecedentedly large and prominent sign. Which undoubtedly influenced individuals on all sides of this discussion was political in nature. So deferring the topic would allow for discussion to occur in what we hope will be a more emotionally neutral setting. Moving forward, we welcome any input or volunteers from the community. Who wish to assist in this complicated issue. Maybe I'll say for, for a future warrant. I did name politics because I tried to write it without naming politics and it sounded terrible.
I think it was important to, you know, call a spade, what is, you know, call a spade a spade.
I mean, that changes the rules of things, so you have to. Politic, politically. Political signs have certain protections and. As opposed to normal signs. They require.
Jim, are you suggesting that we need to kind of elaborate on what that means? That the parentheses of, that are currently exempt from requirements, just to elaborate that exempt signs are a class of signs.
So, so I think what Steph Rohir is excellent, by the way. I would just add that one caveat where political signs are constitutionally protected and. I think right now it's beyond the scope of. Consideration this year, looking at all the factors. Which may or may not, um. Work into that, right?
So where would you put up in here? Cause I didn't want to mention politics prematurely. So I, I have a little troubles adding it into here. It feels really out of place. I'm thinking about how it would work in.
I guess I would say signs that are constitutionally exempt from requirements, because that's what that is. It, it's, and you know, constitutionally, you know? Yes, capital C. And I think that then clarifies that, you know, without saying politics, that's what that is essentially. It's, it's the free speech. So. Um, just to, just to kind of, someone says, why is it exempt? It's like, it's not, you know, you want to just further clarify that it's not. They're, they're not under our regular zoning bylaws where we, um, have a say over kind of business and, you know, general. General signage. Otherwise, I, I appreciate this stuff and, um. I, I appreciate at the outset of next Wednesday, you being prepared to.
I was also considering, I may, that if you wanted to deliver this, take this. Tailor it to your voice and deliver it. You were the dissenter in the vote, right? And so it's, um. I just want to give you a platform to, to say some words that are personal to you too. So I don't need, I don't need to say it. I'm happy to draft it and pass it to you to make your own.
I'm, I'm fine. I mean, we are, we're a board of five. I mean, I was a dissenter only because of, um, you know, the strong feelings that we all had put a lot of. I'd have to try and address a concern. And so that's why I do, I really appreciate that you wrote this. And I think this represents the board as a whole. Well, and that's what's important. So, um, I'd like you to. Cause it does represent all of us, all of us.
So I would like to, if whoever's, or coordinating with advisory, I think it would be appropriate to talk about this before. We talk about other warrant articles because I, I do want it to set the tone that like. Hey, look, we recognize that there were agendas all over the room, you know, like. It, like, it just, it just couldn't have not, it couldn't have been separated from that discussion. So therefore we pulled it, like this isn't the right time, right? And so I think that like, that I want to set the tone for the other warrant articles. A to be clear that it's not anywhere in there to diffuse any emotions that may be still there. And, or, or any suspicions that it may be trying to be in there, um, and then maybe have a more. Productive. Rest of the hearing.
I agree. I think that's a, a really well thought out plan and, um, we'll definitely kind of address the. The elephant in the room that kind of was stated at the end of that last advisory meeting, so.
Um, shall we go to floodplain? Cause it's easy.
Yes.
Let's, let's check something off the list. Heidi, I don't know if you particularly want to.
Sure, I can just run through it. Basically, we're just saying that this is a mandate that's required by the NFIP. Which I had in the front, explaining what the initials all mean. Um, the district boundaries correspond to our floodplain maps that are recently updated by FEMA. And these will become effective July eighth of this year. Um, bylaw updates the maps and adds recommended changes to DCR's floodplain management program. And if people wanted to look through, they can just check and see that they are. Saying we had to take out sections that seem to allow some type of special permits to build in floodplanes. You're not allowed to build in the floodplanes. Um, also that we had to check, take out, uh, addresses that were in there because. They just wanted the name of the organizations, but not the addresses since the addresses change, so. This is kind of it in nutshell. Also, the town has done these floodplain updates. Um, many, many times. These are going to be continually coming. This is a routine procedure.
You have the, uh, who's? Do you have these talking points written down? Cause that was great, Heidi, but I didn't write it down.
I mean, I can do that this one since I've, I've kind of, again, like Heidi, Heidi has said, this has been a routine business. This is, these updates are. They're mandated, they're, they come, get handed down. There's not discussion among the planning board on. The language, it's just, it is what it is. So I, that's fine. We're.
Okay, alright, I won't even try, okay.
No, and then the last, the last is a map of our floodplain area showing the one hundred, the five hundred year. Where. The one hundred years in the blue turquoise colors and the orange is the five hundred year. Floodplains.
Which is much more information than has ever been provided before on this. It's been just kind of historically. We've gone to town meeting and said, this is the language the state has asked us to update for the floodplain. Bylaw, it's not written by this town. It's written by the state, essentially the towns required to adapt.
And any questions, please contact Tom Trainer because I consider him the guru of the maps. Right, Tom?
Some, sometimes. On a good day.
Oh, you're still awake, okay.
So, so Heidi, uh, and, and the rest of us, would it make sense just to have one more slide in there that just kind of quickly listed those? Changes, those categories of changes that were made that you rattled off.
Sure, I could do that.
That way, that could be the talking point, but also people can read and you can just kind of go through quickly and, and they're there.
Yep, like how I did with the other sections, this section, this section. Yep. Okay, I'll work on that one.
Just basically just what you said, which was like. Yeah. Removing special.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Special permit, okay.
From agencies.
There, are we done? I'm just kidding. Um. So this would be specific modifications, I think is what we called it in another slide deck. And then it would also be, the last one would be, um. District map, right?
District map, yeah, which we don't have right now.
Well, it's, oh.
No, there's in our bylaws, we don't have, the only map we show in our bylaws at all is the zoning over, our zoning map. The A, B and C, there are no overlay districts, there's no floodplain districts, and this is one of the maps I want to make sure we include in our. Zoning bylaws.
Oh, you want to, okay, so we're adding it, not referencing it. Great, okay. Okay. Cool, um. What's, what's next easiest?
From easy to hard, should we do it the other way around?
Yeah.
Okay, so. There is a new state law in effect that requires protected use ADUs to be allowed by right. Up to nine hundred square feet, one per single family home. Owner not required. I, I was thinking about deleting this, but, um, because it doesn't have context until you get to the next slide. Um, but local regulations still apply.
I would just add to this slide, uh, because, uh, not everybody knows what an ADU is. Say where an ADU is and then parentheses that we're going to call it an ADU.
Protected use accessory dwelling units.
I think on the.
I think it's, it's the Frank, is that sufficient for you if the first slide says?
I just remember it being there.
But Sherburne already has a bylaw for special, for ADUs by special permit, which are allowed up to twelve hundred square feet. Attached or detached. Owner must live in one or the other. It does require a special permit and local regulations apply. So the, the proposed compliance for the state law is to create two categories. To add a protected use ADU and to keep our existing special permit ADU. For nine hundred to twelve hundred square feet.
Okay, you say greater than nine hundred to twelve hundred. Whatever, same thing.
So, I am. I'm not, I'm not planning to, I'm not presenting this as I would present it per se. I'm just sort of like. I think you, so I think. I haven't, I haven't thought through this because I just created this slide today, this afternoon. So, uh, but the, the idea is to sort of, this would be like if there were questions that we would come back to this slide.
I, I, I think the part that's a little confusing is that the protected use, um. The state allows up to nine hundred square feet. And we've had the. Special permit ADUs all along, but, um, that's over. And above what the state requires, but we're just modifying the language to still keep that.
That's a good point.
Yeah, so we're keeping it. For up to twelve hundred square feet, which was the, which, which is the current bylaw. But for anything under, under nine hundred square feet and under, we have to make it a protected use ADU.
The part of the modification is that we're limiting it from nine hundred and one to twelve hundred. And we're adding what the state law requires.
Right.
And I think we're all saying the same thing, but essentially, if, um, if you went back to slide two, what does that look like again? That. Yeah, slide two, that basically. I, I think maybe you guys think differently, but as I kind of thinking about this from, what do people in town care about? That, it, what's happened here is the town. Has allowed accessory dwelling units, um, since two thousand nineteen by special permit. And this date has a new by right accessory dwelling. Unit. Bylaw. And in order to, but it only is up to nine hundred square feet and in order to not lose. What we have as a town bylaw, we have to. Define separately, we have to provide a definition of the two distinct. Types of accessory dwelling units we will now have as a town.
Can we flip the order? Should we talk about the existing bylaw, that our existing condition first?
I'm thinking the more, as I think through it, I'm thinking we should. That this is not a new thing. We've had these eight, ADUs.
Yeah. And, and the bylaw has it in that order too. So if we were to say special, the, the, the town has a special permit eighty, uh, bylaw. For up to twelve hundred square feet, then when we get here, we can say now we have to integrate a protected use ADU. But it's only up to nine hundred square feet, which is smaller than what our town had wanted. Uh, for a limit for ADUs, right? So we can still allow those bigger ones and then we can, and I'll flip it here too.
That works. I like that.
Because if, if someone who's not familiar with the topic, looking at this.
Yep.
Be confusing, I think.
Yeah, the, um, the thing that's interesting is the. I mean, the previous bylaw or the, the currently existing bylaw. Just says up to twelve hundred square feet, I believe, right? And did, I, I don't remember for the proposed changes. Did we put in the limit that it has to be more than nine hundred?
I think so. I think that was to prevent someone from building. I think, I think so, just.
So what we'd have to think about. What does that mean? For someone who currently has. An eight hundred and fifty square foot apartment.
It means if they don't have to get, they don't have to go to town now any longer for a renewal.
That's what I would think that that, that special permit no longer applies. If there's any conditions in it. That are above and beyond the state conditions, they no longer apply. But, um. I'm. I'm wondering if we should make that clear. That. Existing, you know? Apartments of under. Nine hundred square feet, of nine hundred square feet or less that are existing as of the date of this bylaw. Shall now be considered to be. Protected use ADUs.
Yeah. I, so, so I definitely, I, I want, if it comes up as a question, I'm like, I think that we should be really prepared to answer it. But we have, we, we've worked really hard to pair these back to the really simple basics for the bylaws to describe them. Cause I think we're going to have to spend a lot more time. We're not just going to flash this up on the screen, right? So I guess what I'm, what I'm. Having reservations about is trying to integrate it into the PowerPoint as a point.
Well, what I might suggest is. Where you have yes under. The, um, special permit ADU and then I have that, that parentheses renewed every four years. Maybe put a similar bracket under no saying no renewal required.
It's really, it's a really, I, I can't, I can, it's just.
If it doesn't require one, it doesn't require renewal, obviously. I mean, that's. Kind of redundant.
It's like, what it would turn into, I think, is something like except. Already existing ADUs less than nine hundred square feet, right? And it, like, I feel like it just adds more questions than it does. And I don't know if we even have.
We don't have that many of them as they, as they come up, they'll probably, they'll, you know, reach out to genie for. Or whoever, by the time it comes up and say, oh, I, I, my special permit's up for renewal and then they'll find out, oh, it's only your. Your unit's only eight hundred square feet. You don't have to renew. You fall under the state's category of protected use now.
Yeah, sorry to take that laterally.
And if that question comes up, then we just, you, like you. And if that question comes up, then we just, you, like you said, you just address it verbally, right?
Yeah, I just worry that it muddies this slide, like this slide is gonna be very confusing for people who are seeing it for the first time. We, to us, it feels like, okay, yep, check on all the boxes, that makes sense, but I think for people who see it for the first time. It's gonna require like a line by line. Walkthrough, and I'm worried about unnecessary details, I mean, even.
And if, if you're contemplating this, you're gonna be looking into this in more depth and familiarizing yourself.
Yeah.
There was an interesting point made at, um, one of the recent MWRC meetings that I was at, I think Heidi was there too. Where they said that, you know, like. Like the three A, which has caused, you know, a massive amount of. Work among all these communities, that is a directive to towns that they must. Change their bylaws to achieve the following goals. Um, the state ADU law is completely different, that basically. Overrides the ADUs, and I believe they made the point that. The town doesn't actually have to change their bylaws at all. It's just, the state is now allowing it regardless of what the town's bylaws say, but it's clearly. It's much less confusing if the, if the town incorporates what the state has done. But they, they made the point at this meeting that they don't, you don't actually have to. I, I don't think we really need to refer to that or think about that, but it, it was just an interesting point.
No, Rob, and I asked our town council specifically, can we just let this go and do it next town meeting? But she said, no, she felt that it was better protection for the town to do it this town meeting and make some changes, because if you don't make the changes. Your bylaw can be voided, and even other sections in that bylaw on that could be voided and give someone a chance to say. You know, it's, it's just. Noncompliant, therefore that whole section of the bylaw is not compliant. So. We don't want our whole twelve hundred square foot one to be noncompliant. That's why we're putting the reference in.
Okay.
I'm just going by what town council is telling me they felt could happen.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and if we change it to say. More than nine hundred and less than twelve hundred. That basically says there's no overlap with the state.
Right, right.
Can't make it.
Right.
Okay, yeah, so that makes.
Yeah, I think some of the other towns may not have had anything in it, in which case, yes, then it defaults automatically, but if you've already had something, you have a risk of having that challenged.
The other thing I struggled with a little bit was this whole, how many are allowed? One special permit ADU limited at the time of the initial special permit, if you will. But that an additional protected use ADU may be added after, I, I did, I did want to complicate the table with this question. Because. Uh, I feel like it's. One of the things we're doing in the bylaw is. Restricting to, restricting the AD, the special permit ADU to one per single family home, so I wanted to explain kind of why we were doing that. Is this not fitting now and it was fitting before? Maybe I just need to scooch it up.
Do you wanna say, do you need to say in there that other ADUs, I mean, even the nine hundred ones are. More than ones allowed by special permit?
Say that again, Heidi.
The, the only concern I've got is someone seeing this is gonna say, oh, I can only do one ADU, you can do one without a special permit, you can have a second one if you get a special permit.
But that's not true, because the modification we made to this special permit ADU. We added number nine, a special permit ADU will not be allowed for single family homes already containing any other ADU.
Okay, okay.
So we.
Yeah, because that was a choice we could, could do, yeah.
Well, this is our special permit ADU, so we could do whatever we want with our special permit ADU, right?
Mm-hmm.
So the special permit ADU is only at the time of permitting, the initial permitting, that we can sort of say. Okay, you already have a protected use ADU. You can't, or, or you have another special permit ADU, you can't have a, a second ADU on your property by this special permit.
Right, but if someone does a by right ADU, they can do a second. One, but it's not by right, it's by special permit.
No, because we won't grant the permit, we're saying we will not allow.
Okay.
If you already have any other ADU, that, that was to prohibit that scenario.
Okay, okay.
Um. Back to the versa.
Can I do a quick share just to show where we were into that, what we did in two thousand nineteen?
I think it's two thousand eighteen, I was just sending, just since I pulled out the town meeting.
Um. I think it's, it's, so, this was a two thousand nineteen town meeting warrant that was signed, and it was article twenty-four in two thousand nineteen. Amend the zoning bylaws regarding accessory apartment, see if the town will amend section three point two two of zoning bylaw. Um, apartment. Oh, okay, so we did have in. Two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, that's when we first.
Okay, so we initially, two thousand eighteen, we initially allowed it by special permit, and then we went back in two thousand nineteen, and that's where we.
Yeah.
Amended it in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
Um, for your special permit, okay, so it was two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we did another amendment, but yes, two thousand eighteen is when we. Introduced.
Yep.
Accessory dwelling in it.
Yeah, and actually, the two thousand eighteen one, it was amending the apartments that were already at eight hundred square feet. So, I think we're just gonna say. The twelve hundred square foot one was introduced in two thousand eighteen with special permit.
Okay. And so, so let me share my screen, the last slide is just a list of. The changes, so we have a couple definitions that changed, one was. Dwelling, redefining dwelling unit to match the state law, and then amending certain definitions to clarify how ADUs fit in. Whether they're counted or not counted in different types of dwellings. Then we have to, we change the existing ADU, which was apartments, to special permit ADU. We're clarifying some language and also restricting one per single family home. And then we're adding a protected use ADU, and it's simply a regurgitation of state language and a reference to the state MGL. And then updating the table of use regulations to include both of those categories of ADU. So those are the, those are the actual changes.
Steph, do you think we need to do like a split screen and have the actual warrant article next to this?
We can't, everybody complains when I have things.
Too small.
Any smaller than this.
So we'll just have to have handouts that people can look at.
Well, I, I think that. I think that for the advisory hearings, it makes more sense. To, to not do this from this slide, I think this slide makes sense to deliver it town meeting.
Okay.
But for the advisory hearings, I think it makes sense to kind of go through line by line and say.
What, what if at advisory you present the, the slides first, and then if they want further detail, then we can always go into the warrant article and.
Yeah, that's a good idea too.
Yeah, plus by the time. I mean. Once the advisory hearing happens, March twenty-second, then advisory does their advisory report. And once that report is completed, then, um. Do you think they'll mail it to everyone still, or they'll only, I can't remember, last year did we, did we, we got it mailed, I.
They did mail it, yeah.
I guess that'll be a question, whether everyone actually has a physical paper copy, but. But that's.
It's bigger this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, because of us.
Could we, uh, could we contribute some of our three A outreach funds to the publication?
No joke, I think.
No.
Of the.
I, I do have concerns about people not understanding this without a full warrant right in front of them, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so ADU, are we, are people pretty comfortable with the content here? I like the changes we made. All right, save. Okay, updates or MOD next? Should we do updates since we already? I don't know.
Let do the, I don't, it doesn't matter.
MOD.
MOD, okay. Okay. So this PowerPoint has gone back and forth and back and forth, and it was more wordy, and then it was less wordy, and now it's kind of in the middle. It's not, this does not quite match what Heidi had sent out, none of these match exactly what Heidi had sent out, because I had some time to work on these today. So, um. Here we are.
The, uh, the second bullet point. Um, the, the word adjacent there is a little misleading, because. There's a hundred and seventy-seven total MBTA communities in Massachusetts. And some of them are what they refer to as adjacent, and some of them are communities that actually host MBTA services. So, because the, the word adjacent means something very specific in. There in the MBTA language, that's, it's a little confusing to use it.
And we say, like affiliated with, or?
When about a hundred and seventy-seven MBTA communities must create a zoning overlay.
You just remove it entirely, it's probably not bad.
Yeah, and then we're saying small adjacent in the next one, yeah.
And it makes it shorter. So my talking points, you may not be able to see them very well, but they're down here, let's see, I can make them a little bigger. Um, the talking points, this bylaw stems from a state requirement, the MBTA Communities Act that strives to create more reasonably priced homes near transit. It affects a hundred and seventy-seven communities that contain MBTA or are adjacent. Uh, Sherburne is designated as a small adjacent community, which means our area requirement for the zone is far smaller. And our timeline is longer, our timeline for compliance.
Yeah.
Um, than other adjacent towns, right, than other MBTA adjacent towns. I need to remind everyone what a zoning overlay does, it expands the definition, the definition is wrong, it expands what is allowable on the land. But there is no proposed project at this time.
It doesn't require a, a development to occur, it's just a zoning.
It expands. The options?
The use, the allowed use of the land.
Ah.
Well, it's pretty good.
There you go.
Right. We knew this was gonna be tough for Sherburne, and yet we also know that compliance is a requirement. So we've been doing our best to reach all of you to come to a proposal that the town can stand behind. This is a summary of our outreach and meetings. And I'll read, and read through it.
You know, somebody made a point earlier. And I thought it was a really great point, and I don't know if it's in any of these slides, but, uh. I think it's worth bringing up. Both at, at the advisory as well as at the annual town meeting, and that is that right now, since we're under five thousand. Our requirement is for a lot fewer, a lot smaller and a lot fewer homes, a lot smaller, uh, size and a lot fewer. Homes to be developed than if we were above this. Level.
Yeah, so that's where we talk about the small adjacent community. And so what I say in the talking points, because again, this is, you know, we're trying to limit what goes on the slide, it's, it says our. Maybe area requirement for the zone. And timeline for compli, it's, it's the same fif, up to fifteen units per acre, right? Like that doesn't change.
No.
From town to, from small adjacent to adjacent, right, it's just.
It's the number of units.
Units, right?
Right?
Um. So maybe just say like total housing requirement. For the zone is far smaller, and our timeline for compliance is longer than other MBTA adjacent towns.
And the reason we wanna do it now is because we don't wanna grow beyond that. Limit to become a medium sized town, or whatever the next size is larger from small adjacent is.
Just adjacent, right?
Um, yeah, so I guess it, maybe it's, so would it make sense to add, Sherburne has designated a small adjacent community based on our population size. Which means our total housing requirement, because that's the, that's the trigger point.
Yeah.
Based on being under five thousand people.
Oh, yeah, based on, right, make it clearer, make it more blunt, blunt.
Yeah.
Based on a population of less than five thousand.
Yeah, I like that, less than five thousand. Which means our total housing requirement for the zone is far smaller, and our timeline for compliance is longer than other. Adjacent towns. Which are not small adjacent, what's that, Jim?
Should, should you put those actual numbers, like we're only, we're only required to produce, what is it, eighty-two now?
So, this is the, like the flow, like we don't talk about. How many units we have to create, like this is really just supposed to be like the real overview. We get into.
But comparing it to other towns where it might be. Five hundred and something units.
Maybe we could do that here, to say like. Our minimum zone is seventy-eight as a small adjacent town, but Holliston, do we know what their requirement is?
I think you say that as words, I don't think you should put that as.
Right.
I completely agree, I'm putting it in talking points.
Gotcha, yeah.
We can, I'll, I can find out, I'll see if I can look up Holliston and Millis or something.
I, I know NADIC is pretty high, it's like twenty.
Yep, yeah.
Holliston is having.
They're a lot bigger.
But they, but they're not adjacent, they're hosting town, right?
I mean, th, th, those are huge differences, though, that's the point I'm trying to make.
I think Holliston is the best example that people can relate to.
Yes.
Because it's, they don't have a community, I mean, they don't have a commuter station any closer to them than we do.
Right.
And.
Right, or Millis, Millis would be another one too, because they're a little smaller, yeah.
So there, there's this Norfolk that they're adjacent to.
So they have to produce hundreds of units, well, we're, we're only.
Yes.
Eighty-two, that's, that's the point.
Cause if you look at what Mills has to do, it's huge.
Actually, you know what we could do too, is say what our requirement was in the first draft of the MBTA requirement.
Seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty units.
Yep.
Before we submitted comments to say this is unfair for a small community, and then it reduced to seventy-eight, right?
Yeah, yeah.
For under five thousand people.
Again, tha, tha, that's the only reason, like, look at all these other towns, what they have to, they were only required to do this, I think that's the message.
Do you know what the, uh, the Millis plan is to take that, what used to be the GAF factory area, and they're, and they're looking at that area, uh, for their. Overlay district.
See, Holliston says that they need one zoning district of at least fifty acres. They don't say the number of units, but I'll see if I can find some.
So fifteen times, uh, fifty.
Yeah.
This, the state has an enter.
Seven hundred and fifty houses, right?
Seven hundred and fifty units, yeah.
Versus seventy-eight.
Right.
Okay. Okay, and then multifamily is defined as up to fifteen units per acre. And for Sherburne, that means that we're just under six acres of land. So the planning board held hearings. Received comments, received survey response, a hundred and sixty-four survey responses. And most everyone, most. Res, preferred a zone that was not in the historic district, but rather near transportation and infrastructure. So the planning board. What's that?
Did you ask me what's that? It's part of the requirement. That they weren't close to
Not a requirement.
The state didn't make that a requirement. They just said, that, that was, I mean, we said it makes more sense. I mean, as a town, we decided the resident responses.
I think it was a state preference, too?
I don't, it was a preference, but they, there was some line in there that was like they wanted it within like two miles from a, um, uh, a railway station or some, uh, transportation station.
Or an adjacent town. I know it's a half mile for a town that has service.
Yeah, no, this was for us, because I, I, I remember doing the mapping of it to, to see how far away from the different locations, the, uh, you know, the different, uh, stations.
Yeah, I think it was a, a, a pre-, uh, a state preference. This is, I don't have the final slides from that workshop, but I have all my comments.
So I just found the state list. Millis and Holliston are both seven hundred and fifty.
Requirements, seventy-eight units, five acres contiguous, consideration, uh, da, 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 da. State guidance, that's what it was. Close to existing services, proximate to an MBTA station and town center areas. Those were state, like, that was the state guidance, but it was not a requirement.
Right.
Um, Holliston and Millis.
And Medway, all.
Oh, all of them?
Yep.
And Medway each have to provide zoning for seven hundred and fifty.
What about Medfield?
Uh, Medfield is seven hundred and fifty.
I'll put it in there.
Natick, twenty-three hundred and fifty-two.
I thought it was around twenty-five hundred or something like that.
Yeah. Pretty close. What's that?
Bramingham is pretty high. I think that's closer to five thousand.
Bramingham is four thousand three hundred and fifty-five. That's like our whole town. They have to create another Sherburne, but it make a multifamily.
Wow.
I know.
I just, I'm some of, this is just for like my reference, right? I'm not gonna say that part, but.
If anyone asks, you can have more background.
The biggest takeaway we want to get across is the time to do this is now.
Yeah.
And then we have to do it.
Yeah.
How's our population? Is it, it's four thousand what?
Uh, we're like four thousand four hundred roughly.
We're biting the book.
That might be worth stating.
Current population.
I think, I think it can, it can
What happens when we do the Coolidge, uh, you know, development, and a few, a few of these other developments we're working on?
That's a good point.
It's a good point to have available to us. It's a good data point to have available to us if we need to, you know.
Answer questions.
Answer questions or, or respond to people saying, let's just do it later, right? Like, um. Okay, so the proposed location with the map and then the zoom in, I kind of wish we could like zoom this out over here and put it over here, but I don't want to, it's fine.
Did we get, can, can we, uh, but Heidi, can you ask if this little quadrant could be sent to us as a separate image?
Into what, which
I can extract it as a separate image, but I can't get rid of it here. I can't like fill the gap down here. That's the thing. Like I could definitely copy it and put it up here.
Well, maybe they can send it to us as two separate, you know, so that you can have the full map, take up more space on the right and have the extracted be on a different location on the slide. I can ask, I can reach out to Nels right now and ask if they can do that.
All right, well, right now I'm having him correct that EA and BG property.
Okay.
And they've done the Coolidge one. They already have that on it, for example, for Mesa.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? That puts a blow up on the left side.
That's what we're talking about. If, if we can separate, if we can separate this box from the map, I can copy this box, but I can't fill in the background map.
What, what, what you could do, if you could draw over the whole map, is put a little circle and then, and then have little lines leading you up toward the in line.
I thought about doing that here, but the problem is it's going right through town, right? So it like obscures the, the, the town. So I'd rather just get it as two separate images, and we can put the second image up here and have this just be a native map.
Heidi, are you working directly with Nels or you also, Sarah, who does the mapping?
Both, Nels, Nels and Sarah, right?
Okay, I'm just, alright, okay.
I can do this. Right?
Right, don't stress over that too much stuff, because I think we should be able to get something better to work with.
I'd like to get it separately so that we can just not have to draw lines over the whole town. So what happens if we don't comply? The bottom line is that we as a town can't make an active decision to not comply with state law. For those of you following the Milton case, I need some feedback on this, whether this is correct or not. For those of you following the Milton case where the community rejected the bylaw, the attorney general, uh, and now they are out of their compliance window, the attorney general has sued them and Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court upheld the law and the power of the attorney general to enforce the law. So they're now in a position that they've spent three hundred thousand dollars on their lawsuits, and they still have to pass a bylaw. Beyond lawsuits, the incentives hook is through grant funding. So if we don't comply, then we risk losing grant funding opportunities. Since twenty twenty-one, Sherburne has received three point two million dollars in funds and earmarks. I, I changed this language, Heidi, so I want to make sure it's correct. And the reason is because this said like earmark and this said grant funds, and I wanted to just like reduce the, reduce the words.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Recently, the Sherburne Roundabout got almost a million dollars and, and the digitization of records in the Woodland, Le-, Woodhaven-Leland Well got two hundred thousand dollars. These and other grant programs give prefer-, will, will give preference to MBTA compliant communities. So if Sherburne is not one of those communities, we'll be at the end of the list. That, does that messaging resonate?
I don't know. Do we need to say that, or do we need to use that as a response to a question that gets raised?
We could.
I was hoping to get out front of some of the groups to kind of stray people, like if, if we can sway people right off the beginning, like, oh, the more responsible choice is to not put us at risk.
I think that Milton is the que-, is the first question that comes up when we talk about ADUs, I mean, the MODs. Another T L, three-letter acronym, T L A, um. Milton, whenever, whenever I have like community conversations about MOD, people are like, what about Milton? Mil-, didn't Milton reject that? You know, people know about that. It's like made like local news. So I don't know. I mean, I can take it or leave it. I think for the select board, it would be good, advisory, it would be good to put the Milton talking point in. Initially.
It, it, it just gives a nice, uh, thoughtful response to somebody that asks a question and allows somebody to ask a question, and then you can answer it very uh, in, in, in such a way that we thought about this, and this is, um, you know, the, the reason why we need to do this. As you've always mentioned it.
Are you suggesting to take that off of the slide?
Talking about, um, moving the, the entire slide to the end of the presentation and not talking about it. And to, uh, somebody's asked, so why do we need to do this? Why is this even important, uh? You know, why are we being mandated? Milton's not law, Milton's going against this, blah, blah, blah. Then you, then this is the response. Bang, 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 nice, clear, articulate, multi-pointed response, and it just ends all further discussions from that point forward. Whereas, yeah, that's just my thought.
So you're talking about not presenting slide six as part of the presentation?
Right, having it at the end of the presentation so that you bring it up only if you need it when somebody asks a question.
I just think this is really powerful motivator for some people's vote.
But you know somebody's gonna bring it up. But I'm just saying, that's the time to, time to do it, that, that there really answers that point, and it closes all the rest of the discussion down on this topic.
It may, but they might be the tenth person in line that we've already answered questions on. I mean, it, it could. I just, I'm trying to limit the line of people.
Yeah, I don't understand why you wouldn't just forestall it in the first place by explaining.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't we see how advisory goes and just get, kind of get a read from there?
So I, I would just take the last bullet point off, loss of grant funding opportunities, period.
Okay, I mean, this, this puts a number to like the amount of money.
It's a high number when people have heard like that, how much, like, people don't know how much grants we get. You know, and this is a risk for, you know, we're looking at our, our budgets are tight, and you got, you know, a thirty-two, thirty-three million dollar um, operating budget. You know, this is over about five years, but it's still it's, it, it's a chunk, you know, so it's, it's a good amount of the tax rate. Um. I think numbers are key. You know, Jeremy was thinking too that we should have some concrete numbers that people could identify with and relate to and say, oh, that would be somewhat, I mean, maybe we should have a number that's so much on the tax rate.
I do, I think that at a minimum for advisory, we have to show numbers because their, their charge is fiscal.
Yeah.
So they need, they, they can't, they need this context to be able to understand the potential impacts of the town.
So could you calculate the average tax bill at three point two million would represent as an increase?
Yes, uh, basically I would just ask Dan, and I remember Dan did it, and it's like, I think it's like twenty-five cents on the doll, on the thousand. On the rate, which it was, it was a decent chunk. But I can get the exact number, and maybe that's, if someone does bring it up, that's another follow-up point to discuss it. To put it in a different context, it would be this much on your tax bill.
Heidi, I just saw this last slide here, and I, I don't think I saw it before.
Oh. It's not titled one. I don't know what to title it, but I kind of wanted a summary.
Recap.
A recap, yeah.
Avoid getting sued.
Maintaining compliance.
Maintaining compliance was, maintain compliance with state laws.
Yeah. Is that it for MOD? Are we done?
We are done.
One more.
All right, are we ready to go to updates? Any other comments on MOD? Okay.
Should be aligned with state law?
You mean without the S, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because I don't care one way or the other. All right, any, any comments on this content? All right, so average lowest finished grade, I think we've recognized is going to be a really complicated one that we need to be able to explain.
And Chris is willing to be there to explain it.
He made this. I still think it's too much information on a slide. I have to think really hard about how to.
Do you want to read with the notes?
Yes, so, um. In definitions, this bylaw proposes a modification to the average lowest finished grade calculation method. Now, and it also clarifies
The term structure?
The term structure in that the height of exempt fences is seven feet in the building code and six feet in the zoning bylaws, so we're making this consistent. But we're also exempting at-grade surfaces like patios and driveways, which do not require building permits to make that consistent with this, with the building code as well. We're gonna spend a little bit of time talking about average lowest finished grade calculation, because this is, it might look really intimidating when you look at the bylaw. The ba-, the basic is that currently think of a house like a box. Each wall's height is defined by its lowest point. So that can penalize building height for very specific conditions, like a walkout basement door or a drive under garage, where the lowest point is superficially depressed um, and only takes up a portion of the wall. So allowing the calculation of this building, of this, uh, average lowest finished grade to be done in sections of a wall rather than the whole wall together allows for that lowest point only to apply to that section of the wall. Whereas the rest of the wall height on the face of the house can be calculated without that penalty. It doesn't make a huge difference, but it's more fair to builders, and every inch matters to a builder. So this is where I'm trying to like get to Stephen Bonders' comments about like we want to make sure you're not making it too difficult to build in Sherburne, right? This one is actually sort of like trying to yeah, I mean, not trying to make it superficially easier to build, but trying to clarify that like the point of building height is not to penalize somebody who wants to take a small portion of their house and depress it. And that's the way our calcu-, what, that's what our calculation does. So to walk through a sample calculation, and I'm not ready to do this today, because I haven't studied this and I haven't figured out how to communicate it in ways that are, I, I still feel like this is too much, but I'm willing to give it a try, if, Adime, if you, and if you feel like that's very important.
The gist of it is, is you've got, um, whoops. My screen changer. Okay, the gist of it is, is, is Chris has illustrated these lines, the, kind of what the actual front grade is on the left there, and then he shows the average lowest grade, the, the bottom, there's three lines, so the bottom line is, is where the average lowest grade calculation comes in, and, and just showing that there's a difference. And yet the house doesn't, this definition is not going to change the overall height of the house. The house visually, the height is the same, it's just as he's showing here, it allows someone to have this garage entrance down here. Um.
I, I don't know, Adime, because in the example, he's saying that the building height as calculated in the old definition. Let me just expand this a little bit so you can see it. And the old definition is thirty-seven feet, which exceeds the maximum thirty-five foot height, so this height of building would not be buildable under our current definition. Whereas if we
I mean, that, that that, I mean, I guess the reality is, is the point of the roof line to the actual finished grade that we visually see on the front of the house is the same. Is the same. Regardless of this lowest grade calculation.
No, because this, this lowest grade would say that this house can't be built, it needs to be three feet lower roof.
So you're using this section of wall to determine instead of the whole elevation. The average grade across the whole elevation, you're using just a section of the wall. To factor into the aggregate for determining. What the maximum height is, right?
Right.
I think we let Chris discuss this because he seems to be able to clarify these ones and we go on to the other points.
Yeah, that's not.
If you go back one second to the previous slide, I think it should actually have a bullet in that, that this. Uh, also affects the, the. Height of the. Buildable height of the, uh, of the house.
Well.
But that's the whole thing is it doesn't, the house, you know, that makes people anxious because it's really, this house is the same house, all it's changing is what is allowed to be. You know, it, it, it's just whether you can have a door that walks out on that lower level.
Yeah.
It changes the method of the calculation, which. Would allow you for, um. Whi, whi, which, when you run through that calculation previously, that like you said, the house. The building height wouldn't be allowed, but now by changing that method, it is.
Or, or, or the drive under garage wouldn't be allowed, you'd have to park your cars on the driveway at grade.
Yeah.
Right? So there's different ways to. But I don't think, Addie May, that it is the same house because this, the, what, what is, what is pointed out by this example is that this house. Is not allowed. Because the. Height exceeds the maximum height, so either you. Sorry?
Under the old calculation.
Under the old calcul, under the existing calculation, so either you have to get rid of. The walk under, the drive under garage, or you have to lower the hi, the height of the house.
Right.
So it, it's actually sort of. It, it does. Change things for the builder.
For the positive, yeah, because you're using the section of wall method as opposed to the entire elevation. The average of the entire elevation.
But I think the way that I've heard Chris say it that resonates with me is you don't want to penalize somebody for having a walkout basement or a drive under garage, like those are functionally. Good things to allow in Sherburne, right? There's no, there's no reason that a calculation method should. You know, prohibit a drive under garage when really the height of the house, if you look at this from the street view, the intent is not to have. A height that's too tall, but when you depress. The lowest grade in a small area of a wall. Um. That shouldn't penalize your calculation method.
Right. That allows you to get the compliance. By using that section of wall, like I said, as opposed to the average grid across the whole elevation and then.
So it, so the, the two. Parts of the house are probably both thirty five feet high, right?
That's not the calculation.
The house part of thirty five from the, the, uh, the ground to the roof. And the, uh, the section of the garage and above the garage, if you look at the level of the garage where you drive into the top of the roof is also probably thirty five.
That's, but that's not part of the calculation because this roof could go up to here and it would still, it could be a double decker here and go up and match this line and it would still, the calculation would be the same. Because the calculation is you calculate the average lowest grade.
Well, that's definitely what Jim said, Jim is saying is, is the portion of it versus the whole, and this image shows the portion versus the whole.
No, the portion of it is talking about the lowest grade portion, so. When you calculate lowest grade, if you look at the wall of a house. The way our current regulation is set up is you take the lowest point. Which is down here by the garage. And that is your lowest grade for this wall. What the new calculation method would do. Is allow you to. Section into two sections. For grade, for lowest grade, not, ignore the height of the, the height of the house right now, that has no bearing in, in lowest grade calculation. So then you could have this section of the house, thirty feet of it. Could be at this grade line. And the other fifty feet could be at this grade line, so your calculation, the weight of your calculation shifts. So your average grade for this wall instead, your, your lowest grade for this wall instead of being all the way at the bottom. Is somewhere in between.
Um. Can I screen share for one sec?
Yep.
I don't know if this is any more helpful, Chris just sent this over, but then I think Heidi commented, we lost kind of the good visual of the garage, he's got this visual of showing this walkout basement. Here.
Or did he switch it? Oh.
I don't know, I mean, I think he's trying desperately to make this cleaner and more straightforward and it, it's, it's like such a practical matter. That he's confronting all the time and I guess trying to find the right illustration to show it. Is maybe a challenge and I don't know if this is easier, I, I feel like we lost something by not seeing that garage because I feel like that's the, the element that everybody understands, but. I don't know if that. If this looks cleaner to you.
Well, we don't see the walkout basement.
It just, it's, it's down here, yeah, we can't, yeah, you, you just see the map, you, 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 like, you see the front of the house and there's an idea that there's a walkout basement that's now allowed, that wouldn't be allowed, even though the house, I mean, to a certain degree. It works because you say this is the house, the house is the house is the house, nothing changes with the house. All that's changing is now they're allowed to have a walkout basement, whereas. Based on the current calculations, they're not allowed to have a walkout basement.
But that's an example, everything's going to be different too, so. Uh, that, that, that's the headline again, that, um. It's, it, it, you're not being penalized for having the walkout base in a garage. Um, as you would have been before by using the new calculation.
Well, the, the house is not buildable with a walkout basement under our current calculation method.
Right, so you'd have this, but this owner would have this house and they would be told, sorry, you have a basement, but you can't have a walkout, even though the ground slopes away. And it'd be nice to be able to walk out from the basement level, but you're not allowed to put that in. Unless town agrees to this new definition.
We can find a picture of a walkout basement and change the front one if that's easier for. Understanding and talking points. Not have a garage picture.
I mean, I believe my house actually is one where I'm right now under the current. Measurement, I have a garage that's underneath, but the backyard and the way it. It'd be the way the line of the house would be measured, I believe. That the basement, I wouldn't be allowed to make it a walkout basement.
I think for the purposes today, trying to get through these, we, we put this aside to have Chris do talk about this at advisory. We have another meeting for, for us before. Our public hearing one. That we can revisit this more, but I'd rather try and get through all of our points.
And then we get a lot more too, all right, sorry. All right, so let's keep going.
I'm just. I, I think for advisory. We might be able to do both, to share both of those and just spend a minute on it. I, I think for. Town meeting, we may only want to do this slide. And not go into any detail.
Talk about it, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
So I'll add that in here, Addie made it, was I copied on it or do you want to send it to me?
Um, I'll forward it, I just had, I didn't think you, I didn't think I had gotten the attachment and I asked Chris to resend it and include you, but, um.
Okay. No worries, so that's just the first thing in the updates. All right, then, um. For classes of districts, we're removing a legacy residence M and adding the, the specific list of overlay districts. Schedule of use, um, there's a couple of things that we're doing here, um. Amending or adding several categories of uses. Um, for renting rooms, it's adding language to prohibit short-term rentals like Airbnb. For the professional occupation, uh, it's that home-based businesses are currently prohibited from storing. Vehicles, equipment and materials outside, but this change would allow the Board of Appeals. To permit certain limited exterior storage. Just to be able to accommodate the needs for different types of home-based businesses on a case-by-case basis. For, I mean, do I even say like, for example, a landscaping company?
No.
No.
For daycares, the state has classified daycares as protected uses and they should be, they are, they should be allowed in all districts, but they're currently grouped in with private schools that require a special permit. So if we keep, if we don't ungroup them and require a special permit for daycares, then we're in violation of the state law. And for duplexes, duplexes are also treated differently from multi, are treated differently from multi-dwellings in the building code. And additionally, duplexes are allowable by special permit in the open space subdivision. But previously, they've been lumped in with multi-dwellings, so we need to, to dissociate them from multi-dwellings. The table of use regulations, uh, just list the same changes within the table to accommodate the, the changes. And show where things must be allowable. Um, in section two forty four dash one, we have basic requirements where sheds. Uh, are currently allowed half the setback value and can therefore be closer to the property line. And the changes proposed here would give that same grace to other structures. With similar height, size, height and permanence, such as arbalas, pergolas, et cetera. Other structures that are similar. Uh, for the minimum lot width. Um. The proposed changes clarify the definition of minimum lot width. To match the, the intent of, of the. Concept. And also specifically to codify ZBA's interpretation of regular lot shape, meaning that the lot can't drastically bottleneck down between the street. And the building and has to have a more regular shape. And it also deletes the provision that the planning board can grant an exception to lot width. For special requirements, we're looking at, um, just. Adding and clarifying, um. Consistencies with many other bylaw sections in terms of the number and types of dwelling on, on one lot. And I had examples here, thi, this spans, um, spans. ADUs, is that right? I, I thought I had written more than this. I'm trying to. ADUs, where's the updates? Sorry, you guys get to see like terrible. Uh, file management system here, so February. And updates. I want to remind myself what's in this. Three. Four point three. So duplexes. Then renaming of ADUs of apartments. Duplexes. The street frontage special permit clarifies the setbacks for accessory structures, essentially this create, corrects a typo. Um, and also clarifies that the accessory structures cannot have dwelling units, I think we're going to have a failure here to just clarify what this one. Why the no does not belong in the language. And under affordable housing, we've included a reference to the term inclusionary zoning, which is a common. Term in planning land and just don't want it to be missed by, um, a builder looking for inclusionary zoning requirements. And also adds language that would prevent segmenting projects. Solely to avoid affordable housing requirements. That we don't have developers separating projects in space or in time. Um, to get out of building affordable housing units.
Do you want to give an example there that if, if they. Have a, a twelve acre parcel and a one acre zoning that they don't do, um, an A and R. To get five a, five acres lots, just to keep under our six. How, you know, our six unit.
Uh.
And then come back and then divide, you know, keep, they kept a bigger portion. Come back, divide it again so that the whole net would have been producing eight homes. Where one should have been affordable, but because they broke it up and did a five and a three, neither one. Counted, I mean, so. I'm just concerned, we, we, we know the word segmentation, but your average person, what do they mean by segmentation? I think if we can just say. You have a big parcel and you. Develop it to keep each time you divide it under. Six units, you avoid our. Affordable housing requirement.
I didn't see much of this in going through the book.
Well, what do you think he did on Washington? He knew that, he, he knows that he is under ours. He also knows it's not in effect right now. He divided off four lots on Greenwood and then he's doing. Three or four off of Washington Street. But he is making one of them affordable, so and act, you know, he's doing that forty B. On that area, so he actually is meeting our bylaw.
Okay, I have to work on this a little bit.
Yeah, there's something that.
And then the, um, the only other thing, I guess, uh, instead of saying alternate terms, colloquial term or the, 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 the well, the, the. The common term, yeah, common term, inclusionary zoning.
Uh, in, industry standard or, um, standard term? Common, okay.
Um. Maybe the industry standard, yeah, I mean, that's what. Yeah.
You could say if they just did a search on our bylaw, they would, and for inclusionary zoning right now, it'd come up with zero and they may think we have no affordable housing.
That's, yeah, that's what, that's what I was trying to get at, yeah. Okay. I'm going to stop sharing so you don't have to all watch me type, but I think that was it, any, any comments on the PowerPoint? This one, this one was so, it's so like. Tedious, but.
So if we, if we get it while they're tired, maybe the last few questions. Easier to pass. Do this one last. Get them when they're tired and then the last fewer questions.
I did put it last.
Do we still have to do one more?
No.
No. So this is being presented on the twelfth or the twenty second.
Yes, both.
So the, the next meeting. Is on the twelfth and I think I'm posting it as, um, planning board with. Attending advisory so that if everyone wants to come, we, we don't have a problem with. Open meeting violation. And I'll do the same thing for the twenty second, I'm going to post anyway, and if there's a forum, someone can call.
Right, but I guess one more, my question was, are we covering all these points? Are we using the same slides at both meetings?
I think. Yeah, I think TBD and I think the. Plan is more information like that, the housing, the average lowest grade one on advisory. But maybe not for the public hearing, we'll just have to see how, I think the thing is, see how it goes with advisory, so questions we're hearing. Their comments.
So what, what do we?
What is left on our agenda, which.
Just, um, the, I, I guess the, um, the forty B on Washington. When do we have to have, do we have to, are we expected to provide commentary or feedback?
So, uh, comments are due to the select board by probably April third, right around there, so we have one more meeting. So we have one more meeting to work on this, cuz we have a meeting on March eighteenth. That if you wanna put this off to March eighteenth to have people really think about it, we don't have too much else on right now, other than the March eighteenth one will be to discuss what happened at advisory, what points we need to do to prep, and then this. We don't have a hearing, we don't, oh, and meeting minutes, we won't have.
So my recommendation would be, um, I mean, we can, I can share what the proposal is, but or you can just give it a quick def- description, everybody take a look at it, um, if you have any thoughts, um, let's see, where, let me open it up and just, uh which step do you have at handy? I don't know. I mean, it's basically taking where they were talking about previously a forty-unit apartment, I believe. Now they're talking. Did we get an A and R for this yet?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen.
But I think he's looking at three lots. The first two are gonna have a single home and an ADU, and it's gonna, they, he's putting in for eight-bedroom septics on it, so so it'll have fi- two five-bedroom homes and um two three-bedroom ADUs on it.
Washington Street homes?
Yeah, it's, that's pretty close. And he's only looking at the far lot there on the right. That's gonna be his forty B section.
Oh, what's this?
That's the previous plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not. He he has, because he hasn't put in for an A and R, I don't think.
Seen the site plan, it's on the town website.
Yeah, I, I pulled this from this town website.
It it might be in a different folder stuff.
These were posted in January of, oh, twenty twenty-four. We're not in twenty twenty-four anymore.
I I sent the link to that in the, my email.
I, I am not gonna look for the email.
Yeah, so keep going down, right, February twenty-fourth, yeah.
Yeah, I I thought I had downloaded all of these.
Yeah, the inset on the bottom of that shows the entirety and how he's separating into multiple three lots, but we haven't done the A and R to actually make that separation yet.
It shows those little ones on Greenwood, he's already done that. And the uh, then it's the remaining parcel up there on Washington.
Yeah, up here.
Yep, so he's got a lot in the far left.
Proposed two-family dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Two duplexes.
Right.
The driveway off Washington.
Right.
And a septic.
Yeah, there is the easement that goes over this septic, but.
I mean, as far as from a planning or commentary, um you know, I mean, I guess it it is providing I guess a combination of both naturally affordable and affordable, because I think one of them, well, one of them will be deed restricted. And the other two units, will this be rental, or no, they're condos, they're ownership units, I believe. So, um, I believe, yeah, you wouldn't have a rental, they they'll be ownership. One of those, based on the twenty-five percent, will be affordable deed restricted, and the other two, just based on the size will be, I guess, what you call somewhat naturally affordable, which adds to our hu- diversity of housing stock. Um visually, they're, you know, not gonna be that much larger than you know, a single large family, really. I don't know if he gives them any design, not that we, you know, we're thinking of. Each car, home has one car garage. I mean, I do wonder if the, you know, one-car garages. Um, I can't, can't quite tell from his description, and if there's space for, if if an owner has a second car to park in front of the house.
I mean, there's one, potentially one-car driveway, if there's a one.
He has a little draw, I mean, he has, um some images of the houses, but they show two garages. Under exterior elevations, yeah.
Unless that's the duplex, that, yeah, that's the duplex.
That's right.
And the doors are to the right.
Yeah.
So visually, it'll appear like two houses.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know from a planning perspective if there's really anything obje- objectionable, except, um, I guess the question is with the you know, the the access, um you know, the sightline, but as not really planning board, I'd be more, um, you know, traffic safe, you know, police, fire um sightline under DPW, but for planning board, it wouldn't really. I don't know that, I don't know that there's a whole lot, other than in some ways, there's, you know, reason to support this compared to some other things, it it's.
There's another group of two, right? Lot one and lot two.
Lot one and lot two are single, right now, single-family homes with ADUs. That's the, that's his concept. It's not any proposal yet, it's just his concept of what he's looking at. But he did go and get approval on septics, I think. I know he's got lot one, he may have lot two with the Board of Health.
Those are not forty Bs, those are just.
No, they're single families, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so they're they're separate, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the only thing that we would comment on would be this, this one lot with the I mean, you know, we could make a comment that we haven't granted any A and Rs yet. I don't know if that would you know, that hasn't come before us. I don't know if that makes a difference. I mean, an A and R, if he's got this drawn correctly, we wouldn't necessarily deny it anyway, so it it's a, we would endorse it.
No, I mean, it 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 kind of fits in with the character of the town in the sense it's not an apartment building, it's.
He he's doing good things like net zero and.
Yeah.
Using the stretch code.
And and it's really helping our housing production plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is the kind of, I mean, if it, you know, if it wasn't all the history and the turmoil that's attached to the person bringing this forth, this is something that maybe five years ago, we would have been thrilled to see, it just it's like we we look at everything and kinda go, what's the catch, because of all the history going on, um. So.
At first glance, it looks like this is what the housing production plan was intended to do.
Right. Um, so I think we we have to return responses by the beginning of April. Let's everyone kinda sit on it, digest it, take a look. Just make, you know, again, like I said, there's that, oh, is that feeling that am I missing something just because of the weirdness of the history here? Um, on its face, there's some good things here, and um so let's everyone get a chance to make sure we all feel comfortable and can uh provide you know, adequate feedback as a planning board at our March eighteenth. We'll put that on the March eighteenth agenda. And in the meantime, if you have comments, or if you even have, you know, positive, negative, whatever comment, if you, if you have a thought on this this proposal, as you're looking at it, you can shoot off, you know, your one line or two lines, or whatever thoughts you have, and um in the subject line, make sure you relate it to the um planning board response letter regarding this proposal to Heidi. Um, then that'll just help us draft that letter. If we have those thoughts ahead of time, so then she can take all those thoughts and have the draft letter for us on March eighteenth, and we can then review it and discuss.
Sounds good.
Unless just, does anyone else wanna take a stab at writing it? I'm happy to delineate.
I mean, I feel like, I guess, I know that I um I'm happy to take a stab at the letter, just because, well, unless anyone has strong feelings, only because I do feel like this does fit, fit the letter of the housing production plan, but that being said, I'd like to just have everyone else have a chance to look at it again and just put it this way, I'll work with Heidi to draft the letter by the, on the eighteenth for all of us to review, but in the meantime, if everyone could please just take a look when they're not ten o'clock at night, and share any thoughts, positive, negative, neutral with Heidi on this, so that we have some starting points for a letter. Right. And I guess, is there any other business to discuss, given that it is ten oh three P M?
Any reports from other boards that anyone want to bring up?
I wouldn't say any reports.
Any other thoughts? You look like you have something to say, Jim.
No, I I know, I'm sorry. There's a thought, but I don't think uh it's worth bringing up.
Okay. Um, Rob, you're you're running a caucus, you're planning to run again, correct? And Frank, you're um nominating, or I mean, uh.
Marion's gonna nominate.
Marion, okay, good, good, good. I might make sure that we have that, um.
Have we heard of any other interests?
Um, I I think there's been, I've had some communication, potentially Brett Piercey, who she was on the um housing partnership with me and actually does, has planning, a planning background. And um I was working in Southborough a couple of years ago, when we were working on a housing partnership together, so she's been through um, kind of all the housing partnership meetings when we were meeting with eh back in two thousand nineteen and eighteen, and um so she has that connection and um saw what we were working on and the goals and objectives, um and is really thoughtful and um would be a great asset. And I'm just uh hoping to have another conversation that, to encourage her. To, and uh if if she is willing, then I will, um, I plan to nominate her on Thursday.
Be great.
That's great. I have been striking out. I have made a couple of directed inquiries. I almost got one, but.
Yeah, I know, it's it's always that, and hopefully, I mean, it's not a done deal, so that she's, she's pondering.
I've reached out to somebody also, but haven't really had a chance to have any talk of the the person.
Alright, with that, I make a motion to adjourn at ten oh six P M. Is there a second?
There is indeed.
Alright, Frank second, all in favor, Addie May Weiss, aye, Ra- Rob Wolf.
Aye.
Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Jim Guarino.
Aye.
And Frank Hoke.
Aye, aye, aye.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Appreciate all the input everyone provides. Have a good night.
Good night.